Welcome to the Russell County Board of Supervisors, September 8, 2020. It's 6:00 PM in the Russell County Conference Room. I'd like to first start off with the call order and roll call. Tim Bloodlaster, here. Glenn Wallace, here. Carl Ray, here. David E, here. Worce Christian, here. Steve Brady, here. Rebecca Diamond, here. Ma'am, you have it for him.
Thank you. First order is our invocation of staying and night standing for the place, please. Amen. Thank you, Your Lord, for another day. Thank you for places that You can study upon us. Father, Heaven, we stand before You today in Your presence to ask that You grant us strength. We want You to give us the strength and power for all the tasks today and the rest of the week, whether it be little or big. It is by Your will that we live, O Lord, and we know it is also by Your will that we will live this week in our decisions that You help us strive to make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vehicle where liberty and justice are
Now it is time to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So what?
Tim, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
David, thank you. All those in favor of the agenda? Aye. Anyone opposed? Stand quick. All right, the first thing we have is our public hearing on the continuation of our government ordinance. And we'll open the floor for any public comment on your government ordinance. Anyone want to speak without the continuation, not noted in their ordinance? No one to speak? All right, say no, we'll propose. Next thing on the agenda is the courthouse security ordinance, state. Anyone in the public want to speak on name? Okay, and we'll discuss this later in the attorney's session. All right, say no, anyone wants to speak with the closing of the public hearing on our courthouse security ordinance? Now we have our presentations, and the first one on our agenda is Dr. Brown with the Russell County School Board and their daycare program.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Lester, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We've been contacted by the Workforce Development Board in conjunction with United Way to examine the possibility of providing daycare for the workers, the employees, the stakeholders in southwest Virginia due to the different situations we run into county to county with the different models that we're operating under, whether it be 100% remote or the hybrid model that we've adopted. These things have created a hardship on our stakeholders as far as daycare is concerned. The Workforce Development Board has received some guidance, direction from Richmond to reach out and speak to different school systems in southwest Virginia. We had a Zoom meeting approximately two weeks ago concerning this issue. We also had our friends at the United Way as part of this conversation, and they were real excited. They already had moved forward with this idea of Washington County. And basically what we're looking at, if the Board Supervisors would be willing to partner with us on this project, would be an opportunity for us to provide, again, daycare for the citizens, stakeholders, employees in Russell County, whether it be our teachers, our government workers, our first responders, or, again, parents of students that attend Russell County Public Schools, in grades pre-K through seventh is our focal group. We're looking at a pilot program. We're calling it a learning center. With this, students would be able to work on their remote learning day activities and so forth, in addition to having other activities available to them. The key thing that we've looked at when it comes to these programs, we've had several waivers provided to school divisions and localities since the onset of COVID-19. And with this, one of the things that is available if going through the school system is some relief on licensure requirements. So with that being said, if we were to have a temporary pilot program put in place, a learning center put in place, and those employees, again, are Russell County Public School employees due to licensure issues, we can, again, get to that point a little quicker. With that, we would like for the Board's consideration to support the idea. What we're looking at is the facility here next door. We have reached out and worked with our partners, Southwest Virginia Community College, Dr. Wright, Dr. Brandon. They have provided for us at least seven up to nine rooms in the facility here to my right. With that being said, we've also checked, and we will be able to feed our students that attend breakfast and lunch free of charge during this time, and that can be provided, again, from Russell County Public Schools to, directly to our students here at the Learning Center. In addition to that, we're looking at, as far as the structure of the program, we're looking for someone, or actually a couple individuals, to be, if you will, manager, site-based manager of the program. We'll have Ms. Street be the liaison with the central office. With that, site-based manager, we'd also need a clerical position, and then, of course, we'd have to have the instructors in each individual room. So we're looking at roughly 10 positions with part-time requirements and so forth. We're looking at 29 hours. With that being said, we're looking at operating this program through Workforce Development Guidelines and recommendations, and again, to accommodate the needs of our stakeholders from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the evening. So it's an 11-hour-per-day program. So that's 55 hours in a week. So basically, we would need two of everything, two managers, two clerical, and then two individuals for each of the classrooms. They would be on the same schedule as our students. They would have A/B groups, and they would have one team that works on Monday and Tuesday, another team that would work on Thursday and Friday, and then they would rotate from Wednesdays in order to get their time in. So that's how the program basically would work. It would be, again, a program designed for all day, it would not be designed for after-school to support that. It'd be a little too chaotic, if you will, at that point in time, to try to support an after-school program. We have after-school programs already in existence at our schools with 21st century where, again, our students are fed as well in those programs. This program, again, would be designed to be an all-day program. But I have a fact sheet that has been provided to the Board. Again, this is somewhat optimistic, but possibly a program start date of September the 14th, no later than the 21st. And it would run through the end of the school year. And again, I'll share that with the fact that I believe the CARES Act funding that the Board Supervisors has has a date of December 31, 2020, as far as the spending of those funds are concerned. So with that coming into play, we're looking at something that interrupts through the end of the calendar year. But with our conversation with the Workforce Development Board and the United Way, Mr. Stanton was in that meeting, and Travis Stanton, the executive director of the United Way, has found grants to actually carry us beyond the turn of the calendar year into the beginning of 2021. So he has grants that can kick in starting on January 1, 2021, that can carry us on into spring as long as we need to, whether that be a month, or three months, or the end of the school year. We have those funds, and that would be through the United Way, wouldn't have any impact on the Board Supervisors who are there. Again, going through the document, again, focal group is pre-K through 7. 7 to 6 o'clock will be the focal time as far as the operation hours are concerned. Students will be able to work on their remote learning assignments. The key thing about this structure that makes it perfect for this is the fact that we have fiber throughout this side and the college side of this building. So fiber is needed to support these Chromebooks and so forth. It's one thing at home to have one or two devices, three devices at home. It's another thing when you look at having 40 or 50 devices here to hook up, you need fiber, you need that infrastructure in place. And this building and, of course, the beauty college side as well has that fiber in place. Staff, again, classroom instructors, manager, and clerk, those positions there, these salaries with the recommendation of the Workforce Development Board and their experience in dealing with similar requests, programs. Again, it will be free of charge to our parents, stakeholders of Russell County. So, again, a wonderful opportunity for free daycare, free learning center for our students. Again, the United Way's going to step in with the assistance of the Workforce Development Board, and they can fund the program if needed beyond January 1, 2021. And then the last two points due to licensing, license, licensing, requirements I shared earlier, it is much more efficient for it to go through the school side as far as the employees are concerned, because there have been several restrictions that have been lifted for school-sponsored daycare. And then finally, this has been vetted also with Bayboard, our insurance provider, that they're in full support on the insurance side of things as far as that's concerned. So with that being the presentation, I would like to have you answer questions and ask the Board for their consideration and support of the program. The cost of the program, Mr. Lester and I spoke about this, we anticipate the cost to be somewhere between $125,000 to $150,000. Again, with that coming from the CARES funding, therefore, we would not be out of any type of operating budget within the county or the school system. And again, that's the goal.
I guess the only question I would have as far as my constituents in the area where I serve, have you had any input from people in those area districts that would utilize the facility?
Well, and that's a key thing. We've looked at a couple things there. One is, again, the infrastructure piece. We have to have strong enough broadband in that area in those schools, or those churches, or wherever we might find to do that in Castlewood and Honeaker to support that. That's one thing. And then, of course, you know, I would definitely want to look into exploring that. I think it would be, I guess, a little problematic to try to put all three in at one time, because we just have so many unknowns, so many variables. What I'd like to do is, if the Board's already supported this, move forward with the registration process, and then that will give us some data to go on. If we have a significant number in Castlewood and Honeaker, then we can look for other alternatives. The key thing, again, is finding the broadband to support all of those devices.
Well, I mean, for it to be, actually, to work to be fair, for all the districts in the region, you'd want to be able to support that opportunity and a very important convenience of the people that work here. So this is people that work for a living, and teachers, and does it beat the full base? Anybody can utilize it?
Again, if their students are enrolled in Russell County, pre-K through seventh grade, they can attend. And if you have an employee for the county, a first responder, or a teacher who may live outside of the school division, we'd like to also offer it to them as well.
Dr. Brandon, how many students can you accommodate in these seven, nine rooms, 10 positions?
Yes, we can fit each room. Each room's a little different. It could range anywhere from 12 to, there's one room there, the auditorium, which we would consider for the older students, that auditorium in there, we could put 22, 24 and be socially distanced and so forth. And all the guidelines that we operate under now, the social distancing and so forth, those things would continue there, because it would have to be a school-based program. So we would have all of the guidelines that we have in place now in schools, we would mimic those in the Learning Center.
Just to answer, was the smallest one 12?
The smallest one would be 12, the largest one could be 24 probably.
How do you, what happens if you just overwhelm those?
That's a great question, and a concern that I have.
I reserve a prioritization. Is it first come, first served?
Well, again, that's something we'll have to look at through the registration process. My hopes would be that we could look at additional rooms in the building. Again, we've got a huge building here, and we tried to occupy everything we could there to keep that isolated, it's a lot easier to control. Also, we have spoken with the sheriff, and he is supportive of us offering, much like a football game stipend or what have you, for events our own to be on-site. That's included in our estimate as well. But to answer your question, Mr. Brady, I think we can handle, in this environment, 70, 80 students easily, maybe a few more. But if it does become an overflow situation, we have a couple extra rooms that we've identified here, and then if it is that popular, then I would go knock on our county administrator's door and ask him if we could look at a few more offices and open rooms here in the government center.
I would really like to see the input you could make from county residents to see, you know, make sure, because I think that, you know, as far as a pilot project like that, it could be overwhelming.
It could be. We have spoken with other school divisions. In the state of Virginia, we have 132 school divisions. We have approximately 60 that have went to this point and have engaged a school-based daycare program. And no one has said that it has become an overwhelming possibility for them, but I'm sure there always can be, could be the first.
Do you have some of that we can look at?
As far as what the other, yes, that's no problem. I can produce that and give that to Mr. Lester tomorrow.
Sure. I'm kind of like David, this is great for my district, it's limited, but for the other areas, again, I read that transportation's on the parents. So it runs from 6:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the morning, this says it's just 2:00, 6:00.
Well, you have broadband in Castlewood, Honeaker, Belfast, and different areas in the region. I mean, you have broadband capability in just about all these areas. There's pockets of Sword Creek, Sword Creek School, and then you still have the Givens Elementary School. That would be an asset for a pilot project like this. It was actually set up to use playground equipment for Head Start, and Head Start moved out. Am I not correct?
You referred to Givens?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, you know, that could be an opportunity, because it's already wired.
Absolutely, and that's something I would, Workforce Development's to explore, those other areas, to see what's available to us, who's willing to help us out with that. And the thing about us, I think, your government entity here, that helps as far as the Bayboard's concerned, reaching out and partnering with one of our fellow churches or something of that nature, that's something we would have to look into. I'm sure we can, you know, we can make it happen, but it's a little bit more complex. And again, to me, I think the registration process will guide a lot of that, much like the parent survey we did at the end of June for the operation at the school. Being very, very simple, we get a parent's registration out there, and we would have a couple evenings where parents could come and stop by and register their child, and we would have a better idea then of what the situation is as far as overflow is concerned. But one of the good things for our parents is, you know, if we can do this, it's going to take the burden off some of the other plans maybe that they've made, some of the other, again, some of the burdens on their family, whether we're asking for an aunt or an uncle, or a grandma, or a grandpa, or what's the kids now on their remote days, this would be an opportunity for them to come and do the work here, and that parent pick them up, much like they do at the end of a regular school day.
Well, I feel like that, as we spoke earlier back in summer, you and Lonzo and I walked the building, I did, I think we need to be favored and equal there, all of our citizens. We've got Givens Elementary, which is ready, right there, restrooms, cafeteria, playground. We've got to work with our people, and then at Dade, we've got a community center that is ready. All these are handicapped accessible. I really, really think, once you get this started, there needs to be a serious look at the rest of the county. We just need to be fair to all of our citizens on either end. Givens is absolutely perfect, right there, ready to go. The Dade Community Center, ready to go. And we've got people that are going to have to be driving, drop a child off here, and then go back to their room full. That's going to make it a little rough sometimes. So we need to, you need to, as soon as you get this going, in the next week or two, you need to be seeing if we can open some of the rest of our parks.
Absolutely. We can include that in the registration process. We can look into those facilities and ask the parents if it's a closer drive for them to come here, or is it a closer drive for them to go to, you know, to go to Givens? I mean, really, probably anyone at the Oaks this direction would be closer for them to come on into Lebanon, I guess. But there's some people, of course, that live on the backside of Honeaker, or, you know, along the county line, Pretus, or what have you, there would be much more convenient for them to go, to go to Givens, and then also the community center you have here at the, you're talking about the community center right there in front of the high school in Castlewood?
There, our Dade Elementary.
The firegrounds.
What about the firegrounds?
We got that Mueller-Good thing.
Big building.
The firegrounds is a center of innovation right now. They not done?
Well, they're still working on HBC.
When are they going to be done?
It depends on the, trying to get the parts for it right now. We talked to the Brady, the HBC, it's a large room.
Well, now, Chair.
But the problem is, it doesn't have internet. These rooms have to have.
With fiber.
It hasn't had fiber.
So if I may interject here, I echo my peers here, yes. And so to make this very clear, my family member would have to drive from, say, Castlewood to Dade, up to Lebanon, and drop off a child, and then go back, if they're working in the Wise County area, which Coeur d'Alene, Wood, Scott County, further on into Kingsport, because a lot of my constituents are in that area. So they would have to come back up here and pick up a child. So I understand this is the central location, and I understand that Honeaker has its own areas, that it goes into Buchanan County and feeds into Digerson County, and that's the workforce that leaves this county and goes into other areas. And so I think it's crucial that we, and I echo Madam Chair's comments, that we make sure that, this might be a pilot, but it needs to have, it needs to have some stringency on it that is going to be looked at in other venues. Childcare is definitely what we need to do here. Also, I want to make a comment, if I may, in further this. It says, "The temporary program will be funded by the CARES Act received by the Russell County Board of Supervisors." Did you get CARES Act money?
I did.
So we're sharing? So you're putting in money into this, and we're putting in money into this?
Well, we're taking care of the feeding of the children, we're taking care of the management of the operation, so there is to be kind of money. I will say that the Board of Supervisors got four times as much money as the Board of Ed got as well, man. You know, again, that's something, that's my board about, but, you know, that's a decision that I always.
Okay, and I can understand that, I don't want to stick you on this point, but I want to make sure that the public understands.
Sure.
How the sending is all working.
Yes.
So another thing, I see that the total cost here, I do appreciate the fact that you're partnering with United Way and Workforce Development. I'm on that board for Workforce Development. We do have that, we've had that conversation, yes. And I think that I immediately call Mr. Lester and say, "Givens Elementary, whatever, could work for Mr. Eaton's area." And we all need to be trying to be working together in this. So I don't, we've never been here before, and as everybody knows, I'm just rambling, so I'm going to shut up. But those were some of my questions, but I thank you. The idea, you know, we all have to think outside the box these days, so the idea is definitely needed, but I don't know how I make it equitable at this time, so I, we can't be on your back.
Also, down in Cleveland, we have internet at the Cleveland Community Center and at the homeschooling there. So that means, in that area there, you don't have, you know, the back alley, you don't have the.
When? Dr. Brandon? When I first looked, I read through it, and I read through it again, and I thought, it looks awful like a school. Is the reason you're doing this at a different location is that you don't have room in the existing schools?
Oh, that's a wonderful question. There are some school divisions that are going back four days a week. It's a function of three things. Transportation, and then physical capacity within the buildings, and then the third one is staff, okay? So with that being said, we're going to look at bringing back our kindergarten, first, second, maybe even third grade students within the first two, three weeks of school. But the driving factor to that are those three things. I had a list today, I had it on my desk by about 9:45 today, of every bus, how many kids were on each bus this morning. I'm going to have the same thing for this afternoon, I'll have it waiting on me in the morning as well. So we're going to analyze those numbers to see if we were to bring back all of our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade, could we have that safely on the bus? Then we're going to look at the classrooms as well. Then the classrooms, do we have a situation where it can be safely social-distanced in the classroom if we were to add the rest of those students on the hybrid model? So we're going to be looking at that as well. And then staffing's the final piece. For some rooms that are not big enough, what we do have is we have instructional aid that's already assigned to that room. So what we can do, if the building is big enough, there's another room elsewhere, all we can do is take half the class in one room, half the class in the other, and the teacher and that aide switch out about every 30 minutes, and the teacher gets started on the lesson, and then they go, and the aide steps in and facilitates the rest of that lesson. So those three things are the key things. There's no way that we can bring back every single student four days a week right now. We just don't have enough room in our buildings. Maybe that's a good thing in one aspect, because those that are doing it are doing it because they've had significant enrollment loss beyond hours over the last 10 years.
One more question just came to mind. Have you lost students because of homeschooling? Is homeschooling a definite?
Sure. We have approximately 85 students a year that apply for homeschooling. There's requirements that they have to meet and so forth as far as providing documentation back to us and such. We haven't got a final number yet for this year. They've got, again, a grace period, but it's not out of the line. It could be a small, very small percentage, not anything significant. I'm just relaying questions. Please feel free to ask me any questions.
And if you don't mind.
The sooner you can get them back into school, the better.
Absolutely.
Send back what is normal.
And just to continue on the firegrounds question, or the facility questions, when we looked at these, the schools, they have certain requirements. It almost has the minimal parallel of what the school requirements are. They got to have security, safety, heat, bathrooms, et cetera. So it's just like a school, they got to have all of it. Right now, at the firegrounds, they don't have a kitchen, and Dade Community Center has one. They're fully in their high, their own high speed. So Dade Givens School has a full BTH kitchen, which was used by people in, so that could be in consideration. Dade, Givens, and even down into Cleveland, they're all. Dade, Gibbons, and even down into Cleveland, they're all high speed. They're all, they all have kitchens in them, they're fully operational, they're all BDH certified. So you can take a look at those too.
I spoke to building inspectors as well. We'd have to have the fire marshal come through and grace all these facilities because there's a higher standard when you have K-12, students involved, minors involved in anything of this nature. So there's a different set of standards we have to operate by. But if people's things already been there and operated those facilities, unless they, unless the facility has changed since they left, then it should be, should be accepted. But that'll be something that the fire marshal have to give us a final approval on.
I got one more question. We just called up, but when my family, my wife's family, had Henry Day Care, the certified daycare down here in the Central Park. I know the Department of Social Services had the funding through the state that paid for some of that for certain parents. And I know we have some people here that serve on the Department of Social Services board, but I know that's an avenue for funding. You know, I mean, to me, like some of the other five board members that spoke, pilot programs are good, some I think, but once you get people doing some or vested in it, they want to see it long term. Now, if we commit to doing this and people say, well, you know, why you quit? You started a good thing and then you quit. Well, who's going to pick the tab up? If it becomes something that's such a need, who's going to pick up the tab after the fact and say, well, you know, we've got ourselves in a bind? Now people put pressure on us to want to have this full time, and now you're going to cut it off? You're going to end it? Starting something is fine, but I think there needs to be a contingency plan. Because if you do build it out to every end of the county, the working people, and not even just the working people, just the normal grandparents that want to take that child, they're going to be looking for it. Again, you know, if it works, and it might not work, but I'm just saying, if it's a pilot program and people get used to it, they'll want to see it on a continual basis. So from when the money runs out, who's going to pick up the tab?
Well, the money that the school division has for CARES Act expires September 30 of 2022. I know that the act, you currently have your CARES Act meeting expires September 31st of this year. Are there additional monies coming our way? You know, we don't love stimulus packages, we're going to go through, we hope they will. But you know, as far as, what we were planning with this is communicate upfront that this is, again, a temporary program we're putting in place to help until we can get back to full scale. I mean, I hate to say it, but schools have a dual purpose. You know, the legal purpose to educate students, but that secondary purpose, schools do take care of the children from, you know, 8 o'clock to 3:15. If you go to the average school program, our 21st program, you can go to 5:30. So that's a secondary component. And we just can't offer at this point in time for all of our kids. But again, hopefully after the turn of the year, and whether it be a month or two months or what have you, hopefully before the end of the school year, we're going to be back face to face, five days a week, without masks and without, you know, all of these guidelines that have just really, I guess, restricted how school division can safely operate. So hopefully we'll get back the old system of taking care of the, you know, taking care of the kids. Because if we're back to five days a week, there won't be a need for a pre-K seven daycare because they're all going to be in school.
That was going to be one of my questions. How long do you think it's going to be before you're back to normal? Do you answer that? But then my next question, then supervisor of law. The thing of depriving students in different districts of not being able to take part and participate on these programs you're talking about, different areas. Talking about Lebanon, and we're talking about Dade and Homaker, different places. Are they going to be deprived of the education of the other students? Because.
I'm sorry, can you say that, again, Mr. Christian's hard.
If you want to have this program start here in Lebanon, if it means about Dade and Homaker, Castlewood, if this program that you're talking about is starting here in Lebanon, if not implementing in other districts, aren't you depriving those students of getting the education of these particular students?
Well, we're not going to deprive anyone of that opportunity to get an education. But you know, it's kind of like, you know, buying a truck. Do you need an F-150? Do you need a F-350? You know, we don't know how many people are going to be interested in this. If we do this, and we got 40 people that are interested in this, you know, you're talking about about 20 people that we roughly have described for this facility. If we had another where we could combine some grade levels, you know, again, are we looking at 30, 40 people that we're going to employ for 35, 40, 45 kids? We just don't know those variables yet. That's where we need to, you know, to start and to see how much we do need. And if we need it, we'll definitely, you know, expand the program and get that out there, absolutely. But your asking a question, I guess, Mr. Christian, that I can't answer at the moment because I just don't know how many people are going to be interested in the program. Hopefully a lot. You know, again, the Workforce Development Board said that basically people can't get back to working full time until the kids are in school full time. Well, we can take care of, you know, two fifths of that. This will provide the other three fifths of that need. So hopefully that'll take the burden off of our stakeholders, our employees, our parents, you know, to find someone to watch their child, whether it be, again, grandma or grandpa, aunt or uncle or a neighbor or who met. That's a great point. But we're going to reach out as quickly as we can. Again, we're going to try to get our kids back in school, our kindergarten, first, second, third graders within the first, you know, two, three weeks of school. We'll do the same thing with this program. If we can get it off the ground and get it going, again, we can do an analysis over a couple of weeks and see what the true demand is, and then we can make adjustments accordingly. Maybe we don't need a program as big as this. Maybe we can take, combine two grade levels at Homaker and Castlewood, maybe where we can't combine two grade levels where we need 10 positions here, we might need four or five positions at Homaker and Castlewood. Again, it's just too many variables that I really can't, can't speak to at the moment.
My question is, and I think you've already addressed it, is the safety of the students. Sheriff DiDio said he would provide a resource officer here at Prince, right?
Yes, ma'am. And the work that Mr. Western and I did with trying to develop a plan, one of the things that we talked about was an SRO on site. And I did reach out to the chair, spoke to him personally. And basically what we're going to look at is the SROs for an athletic contest, basketball game, football game. They can pay $20 an hour. So our thoughts were we could ask those officers that are not on duty, if they'd like to go ahead and suit up and give them an opportunity to, again, to receive some additional compensation, and then they can be the SROs there for the facility for the day.
And another question is kind of, is, I don't, I, and I'm, I'm still in this from being with school. They're saying, well, can the kids not come to the school and then get on the bus and ride over here? But if you're opening at 7:00, the parent get back to school, they're not, there's, the buses aren't at the school at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning. So have you thought about that?
Yeah, it's, again, the program's not designed for us to take kids from the school to the program because the students that we're speaking of are the students that are going to be on their remote learning day. So.
Parents going to work and the kid is going to be.
Exactly. But we actually, we're originally thinking of a little shorter time window. And then in speaking about that very thing, the parents making the call to bring the child to the school, drop the child off, and picking the child up in the afternoon. You know, we needed that extra time, so that 7:00 to 6:00 accommodates that.
For parents to get back to where they need to work and they need to be there by 8:00. Yeah, got you, okay.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board tonight, Mr. Western, board members. And we appreciate your consideration of partnering with us.
Are you going to follow the same protocol that you do at the school? Take their temperature, their checklist, when a kid, just the same as if a child is at school? You're going to follow the same protocol here? Take their temperature if they're sick, have a nurse look at them, make that procedure, okay?
Yeah, we have a nurse on call. I have a nurse on call. One of the great things here about this location is we've got three nurses and then five, five interns, I guess, in here. So that shouldn't be an issue. And the same issues we're going to be dealing with with our schools with short-term closures periodically, whether it be the entire school division or a strand or the school. We'll still run into that very thing with the learning center. So we will have, most likely, situations where we have a student that tests positive and they have to come in and do contact tracing, and they'll say that these six kids have to be quarantined or this class has to be quarantined and so forth. Hopefully, our social distancing and masks and so forth will help mitigate some of that. But it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't do all.
No. But if you do have your checklist and you are giving protocol in place, I'm like.
Yes.
Any other questions?
So how many, like if, in Cleveland area, if they've got 12 or 15, are you going to consider the Cleveland Community Center or school, how many is it going to take in the area before we can make use of it?
Again, that's what we can look at. I don't have a number on top of my head, Mr. Ray, is it going to be 8 or 12 or what have you? But if there's a need there, again, and we have the funds to take care of that, then we're going to do it. So, you know, and we're not going to leave anyone out. But we're just going to start somewhere and figure it out because we'll make mistakes. It's just like today, being the first day of school, we had a great start, by the way. But there were a couple of things we've got to get ironed out, okay? Things we just didn't realize, you know, what happened, you can plan and plan and plan. Same type of thing here. We're going to put this in place, make some adjustments for what happens.
They work in progress every day.
Yes, ma'am.
So we get a progress for the children, yeah. That's most important thing.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
All right, the schedule and the board members, I mean, is this something that you all would like to make a motion that we go ahead and fund this? Do you want to talk some more? You've got any more thoughts among all of us that are still here, so we can talk?
I'd like to be able to get the information back, let them pile that and see. I think this is something that works, lets you do it throughout the campaign.
So we're going to have to find them to start, you have to get started.
You've got to start some.
Got to start some, by the way. And then what? Dr. Brown, with two, a week? Would that give you enough time to know your numbers? Or do you need two weeks to figure out your numbers? Because I agree, we've got to. And I'm going to speak for myself. I lived in Roseville, but I worked at Sourceville. It would have been hard for me to have to run all the way to here, go back and find out for best duty at 7:30, teach all day, get off best duty, run back down here and pick my kids up, and then go back home to Roseville. I'm just trying to think of what our parents need to make it good, that their kids are getting in an environment and they're learning. And I know it's going to take three times the stay-up, I understand that. Three times the meal delivery, I had it. But how soon can you get this information to David and the rest of us that will know is one flight's going to go or if we're going to have to.
Now, the information, I believe, Mr. Dean was asking for was how the other school divisions that are implementing this program do it. As far as, as far as how many would need in Cleveland and how many would need in Castlewood and Homaker, really, until we do a registration process, you know, we're not going to know that. You know, the thing about feeding kids, listen, we'll, we've done, you know, some of you guys have helped. We've lost 339,918 meals to students in Russell County.
I would.
399,918 meals. But that's, that's, that's not an issue. The concern I have is the people that are going to apply for these positions, if we hire them, will we hire how many? Six there and seven here and three, two in Cleveland and 21 over here? And then all of a sudden you realize we don't need that many people. What are we telling those folks there as well? And I'm saying, it's just, it's just a situation where it's kind of like a chicken and egg thing, which comes first. You know, we can't really give you an idea of what the numbers that we're going to need are until we get the program started, so it's registration will be. And so that's, you know, again, that's, that's the problem. But again, I'm more than happy to do whatever the board wants, whatever information they want. I'll get, but to really know what's needed in Castlewood, Homaker, and Cleveland and other areas in county is going to take the registration process. What I envision is if the force of forces moving forward, what we can do is have an evening registration actually later on this week or beginning of next week. And have that information in hand. We've already started the process of speaking to people as far as interviews are concerned for some of these positions. We've got plenty more we have to speak to, but we've only started that process. So I think by the 21st, we can definitely have a registration done and staffing established and a needs for each area, I guess, determined.
If school goes back full time, what's the, how critical would the need be then?
Well, again, if we go back full time, this is a focus on pre-K seven students. So these students would not be going to the learning center. So these students would be going back to school. But again, what's, what's the timeline on that? If you want to see an enter, you watch Fox. So, you know, is it going to be the end of October? Or is it going to be the beginning of March before we have one available so that we can mask, have vaccination available in masks? I just don't know. So again, there's a lot, a lot of unknowns. So your registration process is going to generate information. Because you'll, you'll accept registrations from all over the county. If you get a bunch in Homaker and a bunch in Castlewood, you're committed to looking, seeing what can be done in those areas to meet the needs. Sure, sure. Maybe we start off for a week or so of everyone here, then we can look at getting those people in, getting them trained, and then getting them in place while Mr. Lovelace and his team, you know, gets all the fiber replaced, and we get Mr. Ray in there, the building inspector, the fire inspector in. Because all of this still requires a certificate per site for us to do this. So it's not like we can just bring the kids in tomorrow and start. We still have to go through a process to get all of that approved. And again, I'm not the expert on exactly what those guidelines are, but if you're saying that our friends with, the daycare facility you mentioned?
People Incorporated.
People Incorporated, thank you. If our friends with People Incorporated were in those buildings, we're probably okay.
How long would it take you to get the registration out there, get the information back so we can, we can see?
What I would recommend is that we do some type of evening registration. We can get, we can have to get some people hired. But what we can do is bring them in and do an evening registration from 4:00 to 7:00 for three nights or something like that, three evenings. So people can come in, sit down, fill out the paperwork. If their students are out, if these students are already in Russell County, it's not going to be an issue. We have like a one-page document. If it's a, if it's an employee who works here, you know, the treasurer's office, they, they happen to live outside of the county and the kids go there, that would be a little bit more detailed. But basically, you know, what I live it is, is probably two or three evenings of open registration, and then we could react to that data at that point in time. So to me, I would think, you know, maybe the end of this week, beginning of next week. Then we can bring people in, train them, and then we could probably open up, not 14th, 21st.
I think, I think you're meeting the need. It's not the same as going next school, but it's pretty darn close.
It is.
And I know it would be, and I understand that you have to start some. Why don't we have, what's your status for COVID?
I'll be going through that here shortly. And one of the things that, that caught my attention on this program was. And one of the things that, that caught my attention on this program was, of course, it was the daycare between A and B, but it, it came from workforce development board to give an opportunity for the parents being able, where they get their job back to where it was stable, because you've got your kids coming home. If you've got a pre-K at home during that time, you can't get continuity on your hours or your jobs. So this gave an opportunity to fill that void, so.
I don't like it being complicated in the learning center.
Yeah, it, it is, it's the learning center.
What about kids with disabilities?
They aren't sent.
Well, again, it's, it's...
So they're in full-time?
It's not at school. So if someone came...
I'm just saying, if you had one child that wasn't in school.
Students with special needs.
They have colleagues in and have special needs. So it's burden on the family, so they say, well, why can't you take just my other job?
Students with special needs, we have three days.
No, I'm talking about a kid that's not involved in school. I'm talking about a child that's not involved in school.
They were just going from pre-K through 7:00.
But if, if it's a child, the existing parent has a child in school, it could be what?
Well...
It, it could be, it's our pre-K?
But you're not set up, they're not set up to handle special needs. Then, again, the, this, this is a branch of the school system, but it's not the K-12 instructional of ads.
Well, you just mentioned it.
Yeah. So that for our special needs students, they can attend four days a week down at school, uh, so that's, that's...
Okay, well, you made your question. I didn't know that.
It's okay.
All right. At this time, do we have a motion from a board member that reads that we fund $150,000 to start our pilot program?
I don't like that, lady.
Dr. Carl, all right, we have a second.
I'll say.
Steve, always in favor?
Aye.
And Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can we have a little more clarity to the motion, Carl? I don't want to put you on the spot, and I'm not disagreeing, but, um, a little more clarity to the motion that would perhaps lend itself that it will look at the other areas that we've discussed for this discussion. Can you tweak that, uh, motion to... Well, I just made a suggestion, Carl, if you want to, Katie, want to drop in, make this motion, that, that this is...
I'd like to withdraw, ma'am.
Probably second, and then you'll, you'll say of the law, too. All right, Carl?
Yeah, that's a good problem, making a motion to, to, um, to the learning center pilot program for $150,000, you want to say on the vision, that size of primary capital, look at it, the numbers, like eight or, however you all want to say.
Yeah, that's nice, that's good. Carl, I'm not putting words into your mouth, so excuse me, but yes.
I agree with, I agree with that, but I'll make sure that all over the county, you know, Cleveland's got so many, I'm not placing that we could ever be here to get to 7:00.
Pre-K, pre-K for seven, okay? Pre-K for seven.
The, the, the areas in Cleveland, I don't think there's a standard.
Okay, does that satisfy everyone? Did y'all hear it?
I'm here.
No, but I am, but I am...
Carl, can you hear, can you hear your brother? Speak, get over closer to your body.
I was making the motion to fund this pilot program, uh, considering, you know, they look at all areas of our county, students' needs.
Okay.
I'll say.
And Steve, say, all right?
For the schedule?
Yes, please.
Uh, I'm going to stay, and the reason I am is because I want to, I want to see this information first before I, and when I get the information, I'll be more supportive throughout the whole county and see the financial obligation, you know, prior to that. It's not that I'm against it, it's just I'm, I honestly, Dr. Brown, I'll just say, this is just kind of thrown on ass here tonight. And I like to communicate and kind of filter everything and not just spontaneously vote on things pretty quick, so, uh, I would like to research this out a little bit more and get that information from Dr. Brown, and then I'll, uh, I'll come back at the next meeting with my leader supporting on it.
I, I understand that. The reason I'm going to support this is that I think you've got, in order to do the registration, you have to have a program to register. So it's a first step, you know? I feel, within my district, I probably feel so.
Well, I just...
But, but I do want, I want, I want to see it looked at. I think Dr. Brown is committed that he will look at its registration.
I don't want to come back and say, well, it's not going to work out in those areas. Uh, that'd be the worst advice we can give to constituents all over the county, because they're going to say, well, you did it for one, you can't do it for all. That's a real bad taste in people's mouth, I tell you. And if it costed a little extra money to make it work in the areas of Castlewood and Cleveland and Halmaker and, uh, given, wherever, just in the whole county, as long as you're equally fair to everybody, I'd be fine. I just, I'd like to digest some of the information and some of the registration information I would like to see. In my district, how many people would participate in a program like that, because it'd be worth the investment, because you could get a good turnout from that, you know, by just doing it. It might be 100 people, it might be 100, you don't know.
But I think that, uh, by our supposed in favor of this time, that we are laying a foundation, Dr. Brown, to do it, uh, regulation and getting, uh, getting, uh, the information...
But I'd just like to see it. I'd like to see the information.
They don't get a meeting time, you're holding up.
No, I'm not holding it up.
You don't, you don't really know, you haven't...
I don't know. I just want to see it. I want to see the data.
Yep. All right, Paul for the vote now. Uh, Katie, should we, Paul wanted a time, or you think you took this slide or Katie and Paul say yea?
Yea, you don't want your whole, all the...
Oh, okay, all right. All those, all those in favor of this notion?
Uh, aye.
Anyone opposed? And one upstate? Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
Get, get it started where it is, please. Next thing, we have this, uh, this Pat Gray, the Constitutional Week Resolution. Pat, would you like to read it, or do you want me to read it for you, dear?
You can do it, you have the time to read it.
Okay. Constitutional Week. Whereas September 8th, 2020 marks the 203rd anniversary of the draft in the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize as magnificent document on the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize a paper of celebration which will commemorate the occasion and, whereas P. Claude 815 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the 17th through the 23rd, 2020 as Constitutional Week. Now therefore, at the request of the Tuckington Adams Chap, uh, Russell Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I, Rebecca Todd, Chairperson, Board of Supervisors, to comply, claim September the 17th through the 23rd, 2020 to be Constitutional Week. And in Russell County, Virginia, it's the citizens to affirm the ideals and frameworks that the Constitution had in 1787. So do we have a motion to accept?
Chair, make the motion to approve this on, for you to say.
All right, Steve, do we have a second?
I'll say.
David, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Miss Pat, we will get this signed for you and you will be ready for it. And in the meantime, while I'm signing these, Mr. Nolan Stevens with the Lebanon Rescue Squad, how do you, first responders, want to speak with us? Thank you, Nolan.
Good evening, uh, we're the Rookers of Russell County. Uh, really, I, I'm here actually kind of representing the law enforcement crew. My name is Nolan Stevens, currently the captain of the law enforcement crew, and also hopefully, respectfully speaking for all the U.S. agencies in our county. We have been through some pretty trying times over the past few months. Uh, unfortunately, with the process of COVID that we, that we face, I've been struck with COVID, as far as, I'm probably one of the first EMS providers in our county that was positive, uh, so being, you know, the waiter, I guess, in my place there, I think, I guess, made life examples, those parts there. Uh, and, and it really puts a bird's eye on you when people face, uh, not only, you know, all these things hang out and with, uh, you know, while we're seeing from a different age, you know, of course, focused on the elderly, you know, nursing home, type, you know, patients and things like that, but also during this time, my one-year-old daughter was positive. And we saw, so they've seen a firsthand on what this, this, uh, this is, it is for real. Uh, you get a lot of different opinions, uh, you know, this is about this, this is about that, this is for real. Uh, it is rough. I know we have other, uh, citizens in our county that, you know, several of the numbers have increased and increased, uh, that, you know, experienced a lot worse than, than I have. And knowing what I experienced, you know, it was pretty rough. So, uh, what I'm actually, you know, speaking for is, is one thing of appreciation, I want to thank you, while we've, uh, of course, may miss the first meeting, we'll take a look at the second meeting, uh, funding process that you all have approved, uh, for our agencies, Mr. Lester, uh, being with them, uh, of course, you were there, Mr. Reddick there, uh, and so it just really, you know, it's already over, you lay on the table, what are we facing? Uh, you know, in my opinion, we want this thing to be over, uh, as soon as possible, we want to move on, you know, but I'm not for sure how convenient, you know, that could be, but, you know, we have to look on the terms of a long, a long term, you know, what we're responding to, you know? Do, can I sit here and say, you know, hey, well, I, I was exposed to this virus, you know, on my ambulance? No, I can't, because you know what? We, you know, fortunately have been provided, uh, protective equipment, personal protective equipment, and, you know, I would, you know, step by step, you know, even me and my house would step by step, this affecting all these things that come into play, you know, gloves, gowns, face masks, office, all this protective equipment, and still, you're, still it's there, you just don't know, you know? I feel more protected than back in my ambulance than walking through the, you know, grocery stores. But, uh, but the big thing is, is what you all are doing for us, you know, as we're speaking for EMS, uh, you know, we do appreciate it. I mean, every, every cent counts, you know, we, we've been funding, you know, each agency, uh, you know, has been given, uh, the amounts as far as to help, uh, we've already been able to purchase uniforms, because, you know, we all, we get on a patient that's exposed, and really, right now, we're being in struggle to treat every patient as though it's positive, because you don't know. Actually, to give you an example, whenever I was at the doctor's, a little bit of the dry cough, a little bit of a cottonmouth kind of deal at work, at my other location where I work, and came home that evening, fixed my protocol, lay down, next morning, felt fine, temperature 972, uh, clean up, go to work, and just my, my fiancee, she's like, hey, you know, you're going to be on an ambulance, but I, just be precautious as though we try to be, why don't you go get a record test? You know, just so, uh, I'm a physician, uh, got an order for a record test, I said, well, I'll catch you some lunch while I'm out here in lunch, ready to take a record test. A little did I know that my father was going to come back, but I was positive. Uh, so, you know, I go home that evening, contact the doctor, I'm going to do the mobile protocols, and I get a lot more and I mow grass. And next morning, I get up and I mow grass, I'm to the field above my house, and I pressure worse some on my house, you know? And then, so it's, it's, you don't know, you have no idea, you know, really, what happens, when it's going to hit you, when it's going to send some of your symptoms. Uh, so us, as a county, us, us, you know, with what we're doing, you know, and I feel we are one of the worst before it's better. I feel, you know, uh, you know, very supportive of, you know, of course, our schools, as though was presented before, what we're doing with our kids, getting them back to school, trying our best to get back to them more. But us, as EMS providers, we have to try to be prepared for the worst. And so, uh, while you all have that, you know, for us, and, you know, and I, and I understand we're going to be packed, you know, there's, there's funding, we're aware that there's funding coming to help us, and we, you know, uh, we do appreciate that, we are looking forward, like I said, we, as us, as a lab, we purchase uniforms, uh, you know, maybe to, you know, to go in, to get exposed or something, you know, then, you know, we're one of them, also, we're going to get cleaning, you know, industrial washers and dryers at our facility, where we can wash those and have them, you know, freshly cleaned while we're still at the station and begin, you know, switching into a different uniform. So, uh, we're blessed because of the funding that y'all prevented us to be able to do those things. Uh, we're looking, uh, even advanced procedures, uh, advanced airway procedures in our ambulances that we're restricted, we're doing that because of COVID, you know, we're able to purchase, uh, you know, the Orangiscos, video Orangiscos, where we don't actually have to be down in that patient's area, or we'll get a distant vision of what we're doing. So, uh, without your help, you know, that would be very difficult. And also, it does affect the community, because, you know, we can't do those procedures in advanced emergency situation, you know, the likelihood of even maybe saving a life in emergency. But, uh, but I do want to thank you all, uh, and I said, this kind of gives you all responsibilities, you know? How do we take and see, you know, we have different call volumes, we have different, uh, you know, size coverage areas, and, you know, that makes a difference, but we're all in, we're all needing, you know, needing medicine. Uh, I don't know, we, you know, we do have probably the largest coverage area in Russell County, we do have the highest number of call volume, and we also probably have the highest numbers of COVID, uh, of COVID cases, so, uh, what y'all are doing is a great, a great message to us, to help us and protect them. Not only the community to be able to take, but that's to the EMS providers. There's not, you know, EMS providers are very scarce. Uh, it's, it's very difficult, you know, whenever, you know, we go out on a 10-day to 14-day quarantine, uh, you know, well, that's taken, that's, that's taken me off that ambulance in two weeks, you know? And, you know, some of the agencies, which, well, there's another, you know, we, you know, we're not all, why don't you, we do that every week, so then that increases the funding, that increases overtime, that increases, you know, everything is challenged, you know, as, as usual with everything, everything else, but, but I do, you know, I'm basically here to say thank you. Uh, thank you for what you're doing, and, and we are, you know, we will, uh, you know, be communicating with Mr. Lester. Uh, I do want to shout out as far as to, to Mr. Powell's, to Jazz, all he is, he's a phone call away from us. Every, every time that we meet at anything with BP and stuff like that, uh, you know, he's, he's a phone call away, he's been there. So I feel we're blessed to have support, uh, and like I said, we do have names, we want to have more names, and you're probably going to see us again. Uh, and, you know, we, we just lay it, you know, we put it on the table, what we feel our names are, our surroundings may be a little bit greater, a little bit more intense than, you know, some other agencies needs at their time, they may have, you know, they may have something available to them that I don't. But, but I do, my, my purpose here tonight is to basically, you know, to say thank you for what you're doing, thank you for what you're doing for EMS, you're, you know, you're basically there, putting us out there for greater support for our community. Uh, and like I said, I think you will, I think we're going to seek higher number of folks, so. I don't have any, I want to thank more questions. Thank you.
All right, we need to take just a second break for pictures, please. Ms. Pat asked that we have a picture of us signing her Constitutional Week, uh, Constitutional Week, so, Donald, here, and we will try social distance now. How did you want? You want four in the back?
Four, about three in the front.
Three in the front, one in the front. All right. Take two seconds, have her picture made for Ms. Pat. Pat? I think this quick. Can we, can we understand what? Yeah, that's right.
Oh, no.
Come on, come on, horse, come on down. Let's get this for her.
Get down in front of the tables.
In front of the tables. All right, tomorrow, this is what Ms. Pat must have it for her, we get points for it. We'll get points. No. All right, Ms. Pat? All right, next on the agenda is a presentation from Mr. Toby Avery with the Waste Management Board.
Good evening. I guess I'll start off, one thing that I sent over to Katie and Lonzo was, it goes along with just speakers before, was a policy that the Waste Authority looked at for COVID, for employees, employees at transfer stations. And anyway, to be compliant and to be where we need to be, my board at its last meeting approved, working with our attorney, developed a very, very good layout for a COVID policy for all the people working at three facilities. I went to the Dickson County Board meeting and they approved the COVID policy. And I sent that over to you all, and I'd like to ask this board to approve. It's not changing the manpower agreement, but basically they didn't add it to the manpower agreement. I think you have that on your agenda later on tonight, is manpower.
Yes, we have the addendum. That's the only thing that we're taking yet tonight, but I do have that, that is up to date.
All right, thank you. If you all do approve that tonight, I will then, the process will be, I'll be attending Buckin County Board of Supervisors meeting next Monday night, I'll tell you when we meet. Katie, you're, Lonzo, just let me know on that. The next item that I have for you all to review is a little background that you can see in the letter that's posted on the screen. I sent over a little background on a measure that we have at all three of our locations, Buckin, Dickson, Ambulance. Is the issue of tires. As you can see in the background, for many years now, we have been working with West Virginia Tire. They're based in Somerville, West Virginia, and they've been providing, or providing us with a trailer that we load and then they take it back to their facility. And that cost has been seventy-six dollars per ton. Over the last few months, maybe a little longer than that, we've been having some issues with being able to get trailers. You know, they've had issues just like everybody in America with keeping employees, being able to retain employees during this COVID crisis. And, you know, a few months, well, a few weeks ago, Brian, myself, and some employees from Buckin County took a couple loads of tires up to the, and we got to see a really big aisle with their facility and how it's running and potentially how it's going to be for long term for us. To give you an idea of where we're at now, we're at maximum capacity on taking in tires, especially at Russell and Dickson County. We are almost at the point of being able to not accept tires because we're only allowed by our permit by the state of Virginia to only accept so many tires or have so many tires on the ground at any one time. So we have an issue, all three of us have an issue. And two board meetings ago, my board charged me with finding some costs, some solutions for addressing this issue and how we can remedy it full time and permanently. So in a packet that I submitted over to you, I proposed to my board and they approved my last board meeting in New York. Of option seven is to purchase two side block tire cutting machines, one for Buckin or one for Russell and one for Dickson, and a tire shear, which is basically a machine that cuts through tires and rims. And this would take care of our tire issue. And how that would take care of our tire issue is that we can send tires to our current landfill, but they have to be cut. You can't send whole tires. A policy in theory and by state regulations, if you put a tire in bottom of landfill, it will come back to the top. It ruins the path, it ruins the landfill. But if you cut it half, it will not come back out. That's the regulations. And so looking at that, this tire sidewalk cutting machine is the most positive economical way that we can address cutting, getting rid of tires and being able to accept tires into the future. Looking at some numbers, as I mentioned earlier, we're currently being charged, the counties being charged seventy-six dollars per ton. If we start throwing or putting them in the landfill or in our trash, you'll go from Russell, and I'll give you as an example, you'll go from seventy-six dollars a ton to thirty-four dollars and seventeen cents a ton is what you'll be paying. That's a difference of forty-three, forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. If you keep your current rate, that forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents will go back into your general budget. That's one way for you all to generate money. Looking at all three combined, by going with this solution, we'll save, the counties, all three combined will save annually, based on our taxes, that we're currently getting in on tires, annually, we'll save an additional twenty thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Is what all three combined will save by being able to cut themselves, take care of our tires, and not have to worry about a third part of the bill. Pay for these tire machines, as you can see, the two machines, Buckin and, and for Dickson and Russell, is going to be thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. In our current budget, the Waste Authority, we have our, finance manager and myself, are estimating we have a little over twenty thousand dollars left in our account that's combined. As you well know, the way our articles were, that was just passed in the earlier part of this year is divide it by three and give them back to the counties, in T D Surfers. So we have enough left over that no one county would have to pay for these machines and fix their problem. What I'm here tonight, based on those articles of the corporation that was just updated and passed, I'm here tonight requesting that the balance, which, if you divide that by three, it's over the lower seven thousand dollars each county, that the Waste Authority is to keep that money, pay for these machines, and take care of the tire problem. Counties not paying out any more money and get these problems, you know, fixed. The Waste Authority, at our last meeting, voted to purchase the machines and take care of our tires and then take care of our pedestrians. To give you an example, in Dickson County, over the last few months, we've had Turner cut off the tire dealers, the tire and mom and pop tire dealers from being able to bring their tires. And so we have to address this. And all three of our counties, the Waste Authority and the county and the transfer station are their only outlet for tires. You know, without us being able to take tires, they can't get rid of it. And Brian and I was talking earlier today in Sweden. You know, there's counties or tire dealers here in Russell County that have been going to other places. They're now starting to come to the county because it's cheap. As you can see in the quotes that I've received, our closest tire company that would actually take the tires is Patriot Tire over in, next to the Pinnacle. If you know where the Pinnacle's at, there's a tire dealer down there. And they gave us a quote, and it's in your video or in your back here. It is option number one. Their cost per tire or per ton is a hundred and thirty-five dollars per ton. When I saw that, I was like, wow, our counties can afford that or can afford, you know, a general person bringing in tires. You know, but at seventy-six dollars a ton, our companies and our counties are accustomed to that and they are happy to pay that. But that's just to give you some, some thought there on other options. But I'm here respectfully requesting that the seven thousand, it's seventy-one hundred dollars that we have left over from Russell County, that you all allow us to keep that and pay for these machines and take care of the tire problem.
And your board voted?
Our board voted to do it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. And now we have a second. Can I give this full bit discussion? This is something that I think needs to be said. You know, this came up because of the COVID nineteen and the issue with West Virginia Tire. That's how this got started. But even if that had never happened, this is just the right thing to do because it saves us money. It keeps us accepting tires from our local dealers. We've got to take care of our tire issues. It's just.
That hundred percent I was telling you.
Don't over imagine because of the illness. All right, thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, I do. Is my microphone on for the woman?
I can hear you, but it doesn't sound like it's on.
Okay. The question is, now, I don't, I don't have a problem with this idea in theory. But I just need to get some points out here on the manpower. So if this is going to end up costing my county more money to hire someone to run this thing and in turn I'm going to have an employee that I'm paying, not that I don't want people to have jobs, but I'm not growing the government at this point.
Right.
So who's going to run it? Are, you have to be qualified, certified, or bona fide, or whatever to run this thing? And what's, what's going to happen with that? And then if somebody, if it breaks down, are you responsible to fix it?
That's two good questions.
And then you're not going to come back and say, I blew the tires out and I need a bigger machine because the one I bought isn't going to work and here we go again?
Two good questions. Let me address the first one. I'm not asking any of the three counties to hire additional labor. We already have staff at all three locations. Existing staff can use, utilize the tire machine. Buckin, to give you an example, they have a tire machine. That's why we're getting them a tire shear. This being an unexpected, you know, situation, we need to budget for this, the Waste Authority. What I hope to do in our next budget is to buy Russell and Dickson a tire shear. So everybody has a tire cutter and everybody has a tire shear. And let me explain the difference. A tire cutter that we're buying for Russell and Dickson cuts the tire. The tire shear, if we get a rim, a tire with a rim on it, or, you know, a tractor tire or a farm tractor, we can take that shear that will go on our loaders and cut it in two. So that's why we wanted to try to budget next year to buy shears for Russell and Dickson. Answer your second question. The folks with Buddy Manufacturing, that's who are buying the pro, will provide our staff with training. It's basically, I don't know if everybody got to watch the video, it's fairly simple to use. You simply take the tire, you set it on it. You don't have to be, which I'm all about, you know, employee injury, I don't want any of that. The ones that Dickson County used to have, that was a employee injury weight to have. It was more like a, an upscale wood splitter. And you had a different thing, you had to put it up on the machine. This one we don't. You basically set it up against it, it pulls it up, it cuts the tire. The person lifts it around, it pulls it back up, it does it, and you're done. A shear goes on the end of the loader, so limiting someone's injuries, you know, minimal. The machine that we're hitting, you don't, you're not around the blade, the person operating is behind it. You control it from behind. For me, it's the easiest, least amount of getting someone hurt. As far as insurance, you know, it is a part of our duties at the transfer station, the employees. In Buckin, we're using probablators to cut tires. The employees there are supervising them, training them, showing them how to use the machine and also watching them. Let's give you an idea, in about two hours, I get to cut tires. And they have about that third tire problem fixed because they have a tire machine.
Have you looked, maybe done a load as far as a separator and grinder?
That's a good question, too. As you can see, one of the ideas was to look at a tire shredder that we can make molds from.
Yeah.
One of those machines, a mold one, that's what we've recently looked at beginning with, Mr. E. Is to buy a tire shredder, we can move it from county to county, but one of those costs around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we did budget the counties. I'm not telling you to say, can I have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
There you go. You're cutting back a bit.
Oh, no. So this idea was something that we, as the Waste Authority, can look at. There may be grants that we can get to buy one of these, there may be a pilot program through EPA that we can buy and make mulch. You know, the mulch could be used for a lot of you. This mulch is not playground mulch, so let me make that perfectly clear because you have to take the wire. But the mulch that this machine creating could be used as daily landfill covers and with, you know, maybe sell to our landfill or get a cheaper rate on our, our trash. It could be used by PSAs or PAX to, you know, use this field rather than buying gravel. You know, there's some opportunities to use that mulch. But like I said, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars is a lot of money. And I know that we're not for climate, we asking for money and I knew, but the cheapest way we could do it and the counties wouldn't be out any money is option seven because we had some documents to answer. I hope that explains everybody's questions.
Okay.
One minute that I could hear.
If you do, I'll, I'll let you know.
All right. I just want to make sure I answered your questions.
Another note, you made a statement about the community workforce doing this in another county, and I don't remember the county, you may have said Buckin County or something. But the question is still out for me, and I'm asked if we can ensure that those, those folks to run this machine or how that works, how that would work with Russell County, and what the liabilities are here at this county for using that particular kind of labor.
Okay. Give you an idea. Virginia Code eight point oh one dash forty-two, six point eight, and I'll read it to you. Civil and empty for public and nonprofit corporations, officials, and private volunteers participating in certain programs or probation. This is what our programs in all three of the counties run on. Our leader picked up programs, our elderly Doug Kleenums, our probationers at our transfer stations. This is what law that we run, even your program here that missing. Probation officers, court personnel, state, county, city and town personnel, any other public official and private volunteers who participate in a program where persons on probation or community service are ordered as a condition of their probation or community. as a condition of their probation or community service to pick up litter along sections of public roadways or waterways, to perform recycling duties at landfills, garbage transfer sites, and other waste disposal systems, to mow rattle weeds, or to perform other landscaping and maintenance tasks, or to perform services assigned by such probation of their services. Assigned by probation officers, court personnel, state, county, city or town personnel, or private volunteers acting as approved worksite supervisor of a court-approved voluntary jail diversion program shall not be liable for any civil damages to a probation, probationer, or person on community service or the property of such person, or acts of or omissions resulting from such participation unless such act or omission is a result of willful, willful misconduct. The provision of this section shall not be interpreted to agree any community to withdraw transporting persons or probationers or a community service person or a mother who by his negligence may injure such probation or person on community service. That's the law, that's what we run under. And that's what we've used for sixteen years now. Uh, Frank Gilmore had this pass through legislation to do these programs, to do these highway programs, to be able to use them to do work programs so that probationers, people getting time, can participate and be able to work off their time. And it's been a good program for all of us. Russell County in particular is having success here with Mississippi. And, uh, but this is the law that we run under, and this is what, what, what we do.
One more thing. I see that, uh, can pick up litter, recycling, mowing, et cetera.
Yes.
But in this, I don't see running one of those machines that has a blade on it. I'm just saying, recycling to me is taking plastic and separating cardboard and plastic.
But it also says other waste disposal systems.
How deep is that?
Will be. And it also says other waste disposal systems.
Okay.
That's working at a transfer station. And we've been working at a transfer station for a long time now. Weed eating. This machine that we're getting, the blades is new. You know, it basically cuts that out entirely out. Um, and I see you're, you're concerned.
I'm just asking.
And I, I'm, I'm the first one to be concerned. I don't want anybody hurt. But, you know, running a weed eater or a chainsaw is more dangerous than this machine is. Because the person operating it has to be behind it. And, you know, our workers' compensation, you know, Bo and Dickson, him, he said, it's, it's part of their duties for our employees. For the probationers, you know, if there's a community service worker, or they're a case worker, or they're missing, says this is a part of your probation, this is what you're gonna be doing. You're gonna be going down to the transfer station and Chad on the list will be their site supervisor. They tell you what you need to do. That's part of their, their probation. And they're, we're covered under the seal of community. And that's, I'm no, no judge or no attorney, but that's what we've been using. Bacchanan County uses them for everything. You know, they do maintenance, they do, uh, work at the transfer stations, the two-litre tires, as probationers do that with her, with staff supervising. Uh, it gives them a way to work their account. I mean, it's, it's good public service for the employees.
You said you don't have a holding kind of license or anything to operate this machine. There's just gonna be, they're gonna, the people that you buy this from, they're gonna draw you a warrant.
They're gonna try and make it something.
So, so then your, your staff would try any kind of, any work with this machine?
They have to be site supervisor. As we did say, in, in, you know, the site station, personnel site has to be supervisor. And they're that way of a team thing we have. You know, Chad has weed eating, you know, these are their site supervisors on the list. And, uh, they make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
All right, Katie, I have a question to clarify. Please. Is this always a two-part motion? Do we need first to take the money back within the county and then re-appropriate it to make the purchase? Or is this one motion that David made to go ahead and purchase it? All right. Just one would do.
Uh, unless Lonzo knows something, I don't know of any reason why you need to take it back and re-appropriate it. So, please.
Tire did appropriate it in business.
And you do?
If you don't, and I got a couple questions, turn them real quick. And we got seventy-one hundred dollars remaining in our account that we saved, which is good.
Right.
Uh, the machine is thirteen eight, right?
For two.
For two. Okay. Okay. If this is Judge Moore's and, uh, Zach Stute's program, which Mississippi works for, so to give, if part of the motion could be, you know, us looking, discussing with Judge Moore and, uh, Zach Stute's, the couple of attorneys, that they feel comfortable with this program proceeding with this job description in addition to what they're doing as part of the motion, or y'all, as just suggestions to the board supervisors. So, I don't know if you see.
One thing I wouldn't be interested in that.
I talked to staff.
To do this, turn, you know, we don't have to have the probationers. Now, that, that, let me make that clear. The staff could do this. The probationers help the staff. We only got two down there. It would help us get some of these taken care of. If we need Chad pushing the button, or Tommy, or somebody like that, we can do that. But I, don't let your motion hinge on probation. That's what I'm asking.
Fair enough. Okay. Second thing is, so you're saying that the community workers will be poorly of a manual label than the operation of the machine? Is that right? Okay.
Okay, as it is, it's fine as is. Is that right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll call for a vote then. David made the motion that we purchase this machine in ten seconds. So, and we have a discussion. Now, all those in favor? Any one opposed? Anyone abstain? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Excuse me, please. What was your first, uh, when you came up to the floor, you said something?
The COVID policy, uh, this is a deedment, and Katie has that on later.
And your board's already approved every one that might get up in, in your legal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our board has already approved the COVID policy. Dickerson's already...
I couldn't hear Katie there when she was going. I thought she said she was gonna bring that. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, David.
All right, now we have the, uh, approval of our minutes. Our first is for the regular office of third meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Steve, a second. Second, Lou. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any one opposed? All right, our next set of minutes is for our office eighteenth meeting, the joint meeting with the PSA. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, call. All right, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Boards. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Anyone? No, we're staying. All right, now we need a motion to approve our expenditures for payment. We have a motion to approve paying your bills.
So move.
Ten. We have second?
Second.
Lou. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Anyone opposed? All right, yeah, we need to pay those fees. All right, our third thing is our committee appointments for the board consideration. The first is for our Heart of Appalachia Board. And there are two positions. The first one is, uh, Ms. Heather Powers, and that is, uh, she is our current director of our tourism. So, we have a motion for that first position. She is, um, state code to serve on our Heart of Appalachia Board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion to, uh, reappoint Heather Powers to that position as she does serve as our county DMO.
All right. Katie, we don't leave second, do we?
Yeah, I guess you could just, uh, you've done it both by, you did second the last time you did nomination, so.
Okay, do we have a second on this, on the nomination of Kelly?
Second.
Ten. All right, all those in favor of this first position, Heather Powers?
Uh-uh.
Anyone opposed? All right, the second, we have a second position open. It starts on September the tenth. It was the, uh, to fill in the continuation of, uh, Ms. Becky Gilmes. So the floor is now open for another nomination for the Heart of Appalachia Board.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to nominate Victoria Jen.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Lou. All right, any other nominations? All right, with that, let's vote for Ms. Victoria Jen. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any one opposed? Anyone abstain? All right, we have Ms. Heather Powers and Ms. Victoria Jen. Next appointment is the Cumberland Mountain, uh, Community Service Board. And this is to, to complete the, uh, term for Ms. Vance who had to resign. It is a three-year term. Floor is now open for any nominations.
Did Mr. Brown put his application in?
No.
Yes, yes. There's, there's no application in the paper. Yes.
Eric Brown.
Eric Brown.
David, I'll make a motion.
Eric Brown.
Dave.
Wait, wait, let me get that. David, who said second?
Second.
Charles. Okay, Charles. All right, any others? All right, with that, all those in favor of Eric Brown?
Uh-uh.
Uh, anyone opposed? All right. Next, we have our citizens' comment period. And I have two names. First is Kelly Baker. Kelly is front.
Good evening. Um, from the library, I did want to let y'all know that the library has gotten, um, some CARES COVID money from the Library of Virginia. Um, they made an application through the Institute for Museum and Library Services. Um, and basically, those of us that are considered poor have got money. Um, several of our surrounding counties also got some, a little some pie, for instance. It just was based on things like the poverty levels and the broadband distribution. Um, we're spending it on a variety of things. Uh, the first thing we're gonna do is buy about five thousand dollars worth of eBooks and more for juveniles. Because with the system, with the schools going the way they're going, children will simply not have access to their libraries. So we're also, uh, going to be issuing each of the children a generic library card that they can use to download books. It's digital only, so they don't incur any fines, nothing like that. Um, and I just want to let you guys know that, that, um, Library Board has decided how they're gonna spend that, and we're about ready to jump in on that. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention, I don't know if it's feasible for the county, but I have talked to one of the towns, and I'm gonna talk to the other town next week to try to have story walks at each of the town, at the town parks. And if, if I get a good, a go from there, I'll, I'll go then to Cleveland. Um, the story walk is just that. You basically take apart a storybook and put it up as like a little poster or a little sign so that as the kids walk from sort of station to station. If you remember the old park courses where you would go from point to point doing exercise, well, you'd only have to walk and read the story with a child. So, um, I might be trying to hit the county up if I can't find some Boy Scouts or something to help us build the, or create the little stations. May try to get the, um, the, get Missy's crew to help build some of those. But that's one other thing we're looking at is since we can't, we're having trouble getting people to come to the library. We'll try to keep them outside, keep them healthy. Thank you.
All right, next we have, uh, William Osborne. State true address.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I do have your name and address. I'll give it to you. William Osborne, state true, address.
William Osborne, fourteen thirty-six, Fort Ridge Road, Fort Ridge, two four, two four nine. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. You know, I'm here to talk about a problem that's, you know, not only in our area, but lots of parts of this county is a high-speed internet. And I live on the Fort Ridge section. I guess somebody knows where Chad's in. I think it's, uh, sixth part of the county there. I always thought they could raise it up there. But, uh, it's about a five-mile section. They've got internet service, it's back there, and that's, I think, about two miles up the mountain. It's actually a mountain that built in Raven, and it comes off on Pike Creek. And there's about a four-mile section that we're underserved, and we don't have the internet service. It's kind of our understanding that coming to Mountain Plateau and, and Paul Broadman has money to bring internet to underserved areas. And so, uh, we contacted, I talked to David, I talked to Bill Morfield, and, uh, Bill Morfield said money, there shouldn't be money there. He said it's like, you know, other areas, that, you know, they, they's underserved areas everywhere. But he said that, uh, that money was there, and he said even the CARES money could be possibly used for that. And we talked to Cumberland Mountain Plateau, talked to Jim Baldwin, and he got some numbers, that contacted Paul Broadman. And I was gonna be honest with you, they were very clippant when we talked to them. And, uh, said they had no interest in putting a line across to there, and, you know, what, it was something they wasn't gonna do, but they were very clippant about it. Well, we contacted them again, talking to Morgan Griffiths and Bill Morfield and others, and they were real nice to, like, wanted us to get a petition. And we had, I think I gave some paper sign that I gave David and Mr. Brady, I gave them, uh, copies of that, and copied Fort Longwood and Paul Broadman. But one of the questions that I had, I wondered how, how the Paul Broadman, how do they pick and choose? Is it, is it on population? What Bill Morfield said is that they should, that y'all might already have, he said they should have a plan laid out for your more supervisor. That Paul Broadman don't have a plan. All they're gonna do is with their money, you know. And, uh, do y'all have that? Have they done that?
Mr. Brady, you're on Cumberland Plateau.
They, they, they've got money. And they, they've been awarded a ton of money. I think it's maybe like seventeen billion dollars to go into what they call a cap two here. I don't know what the cap two stands for, David, I know. They, they can only do so much at the time. And I know they've been working, they're working, they're getting ready, well, they did a few beltings.
They've been up nineteen, and that's all we took.
Overlapping the day. And then they're, uh, also down through Cleveland, aren't they? You know, they're, they're running bunch lines down there, and I think up in Spring City. What, right, how they pick and choose, I couldn't begin to tell. At our last meeting, Dickson County was complaining because they hadn't had anything, none of the dollars for their, so. Cumberland Plateau owns half, half of, point, half of the, I guess, half of the...
Fiber.
Fiber system, Cumberland, you know, Cumberland Mountain system. But the op, and, and, uh, Point Broadman, which is all out Sunset, owns the other one. But they're the designated operator by the agreement. They pick where they go. Their restrictions in the agreement says they have to pick up so many people every year. The first year, they're way behind, and they blamed that on Verizon. They said they didn't give, uh, no AED, blamed it on AED because they couldn't give whole attachments to attach the lines and color. And, uh, I don't know, it's, it's frustrating, I'll tell you. But I looked at your petition, you got over a hundred signatures on it.
That was probably at least forty, not coding language, because I heard of it, if not, if not more. And, and if the county got to go on in the fine district, I don't know.
Pitchman gives, does it come up from, uh...
From Raven side, it's bedroom.
From Raven side, up in about two miles?
Yeah, it's bedroom, and they're, uh, within the...
How far does it, where does it end up at? Does it go up to the church up there?
Uh, not as far as the church.
Not quite there.
Uh-uh, not as far as the couple of people.
Point, Point's Bible's already in the ground, all the way through Sword Creek and...
Yeah, yeah.
It's already...
It's already all laid through there, all that, all they, should have to do is set a cabinet and do the connection.
And Will Morfield said that, uh, we might want, that IGO and others, we might wanna get some competition for, you know, to, uh, maybe some others become a, the spectrum. So we talked to them, they said they would love, if they could get the money, they'd love to come up across there.
Well, that'd be the, just what to get it?
That, if they, yeah, if they could get the money, they said they, they could bring the cops up.
All they gotta do is file an application.
Yeah, and we approved resolutions in support for both IGO and Point Broadband to apply for money. And it is frustrating. It's like Mr. Brady said, it's like in my district. You know, they, they started in a couple areas, but, you know, they, they go up for Sail Road, but only so far, and they stop, and it makes no sense, because it's like there's just as many houses passed where they stopped as there were. Where they'd been. The application, the application we approved, then, they're asking for the rest of the money that they need to do internet in all four counties. Now, when that's gonna be done, who can tell?
Well, we got 35 million to cap to.
Yeah.
Very frustrating, because I know, it, it comes up 19, but if you live off 19, you don't forget it. I could lay in piles all the time at the Delphine. She can see the community college, and she works at the community college. As she said, she was told that whoever the provider is, oh, I'm not putting the wire in, it'll cost you $3,000 to run the wire to your house. And she's sitting and looking at Southwest Community College, and the provider put it in, and she's very frustrated, so I think we're all.
Some people, I've talked to people that's hardly buying the end of the line, but I love you, without dollars.
One of the things I mentioned to you too, is, uh, I'd like to see Lou and Steve look at is, uh, the cell site there in that area. I mean, it, it's desperately needed. I mean, it's such, it's, you die out there with that, with couple Raven, and backside,
Yeah, all across, you got, you got a job at Big A Mountain, and, and Fire Mountain, none of them have.
I wanna bring that up tonight, because that's something desperately needed, and I, I'm sure it's desperately needed in Hills there, in other areas of the county.
I'd sooner talk to Rick, Lou.
Mr. Osborne, if you feel inclined, and, uh, I would like to ask the, the Chair and the Administrator to put on air agenda for next time to hear Joseph Fugit and make a presentation here and tell us.
Great, I can see.
Exactly, what he's, what he's planning on doing. So you could watch us on TV, or listen to it, or whatever, or be here in person, but we want those answers too.
Well, I appreciate that. And that's, uh, like I said, I know it's all different areas, but, you know, this is my area, and, and they just launched you when they fired, they let them have access to it. I know one lady, she's got a compromise meeting, so, and, he said she don't own them all, she wants her children to, you know, school, and we have a very, very time, so.
If y'all, you've talked to Spectrum?
Yeah, my wife, she's actually talked to them in the same, and many of the people that they would, they would, uh, love getting friends to come across there. But they would love, uh, be willing to do the problem.
It is frustrating. A gentleman called me from the Purcell Road area, um, not that long ago, he asked me why I'd list up right at his house, and I don't, I don't worry. I don't, we haven't decided. We, we noticed. They, they picked out a couple of projects in Russell County, and they're doing a couple of tasks. I think they're doing one in Buckland, and there's anybody that they think is.
But I, I do appreciate y'all's time, and if y'all have any ideas, or if y'all wanna contact Spectrum or any of them, and, you know, I, I'll, I'll look back to next meeting.
Give me that number, and I'll contact them, and, and help them with the process to put in that.
And Will Morfield said he was gonna work, he gets that too, he said he was gonna contact IGO and a few others also. So maybe we can get going, and, uh, I, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have a public comment? Anyone else want to speak? Anybody else want to speak? All right, senior, we'll now have our, um, Constitutional Officer, so, senior. And now we, we'll turn it over to our County Attorney for his request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first thing that I have for the board is the continuity of government operations ordinance that we had the public hearing on earlier. This is the same exact ordinance, uh, that we adopted in April. As I, as I discussed in April, it does have an automatic, um, expiration, uh, in six months. And due to the fact that we've received additional COVID money, and as well, where this area is just now feeling the effects of COVID, I do think that it's in your all's best interest to re, to reenact the statute. Um, it can be rescinded at any time by majority of the board, but it would be in effect, um, from this date until March the 6th of 2020 or whatever.
All right, senior, need a motion for us to, eight to ten, please?
Yes, okay. Yes, please.
I can hear you. I said I'd like the same motion to, to keep the continuity of government operations going.
Second? Second. Lou. All right. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You second.
The second ordinance, um, that we had the public hearing on earlier, is the courthouse security ordinance. And this is, is just an amendment of an existing ordinance. And the law was recently changed to allow localities to increase their courthouse security fee from $10, which was the previous maximum, which was what we had, to $20. And that is taken out of criminal and traffic offenses and juvenile and domestic relations general district circuit court, it doesn't apply to civil cases, but it is a fee if the defendant is convicted. So that, that is a fee that goes to, uh, providing the necessary security for the courthouse, which is, has been an ongoing issue that the board is, is currently working on addressing. So that, that would be additional funding to reverse those issues.
So we need a motion to, um, raise this fee for the courthouse security ordinance?
To, to pass the amendment against.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
Certainly.
Steve, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Ten. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You second. All right. Lady, the Westman at the board.
Yes, uh, I think it says usual agreement on that, but all I have for the Board's approval tonight is, um, the addendum to the man, the manpower agreement that Toby referenced. I have, I've reviewed that in Dickinson County, and I think a lot of them have reviewed it, and Dickinson County has already passed this as well. This is just to address their issues with COVID. Um, the three localities are still working on finalizing all of the documents, so, but this will, I imagine, will be incorporated into the finalization, but they do need this to address that temporary, um, concern. So I would ask that the board approve the addendum to the ma, to the current manpower agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Steve, lady, you second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, for abstaining? All right.
The next thing, um, that I have, Madam Chair, is a resolution I've received. Um, and it's from, uh, the Ratcliffe Foundation. It's in regard to, um, placing statues in Russell County. And I reviewed the statue, and it doesn't, it does not financially obligate the board supervisors at all. It's basically a resolution to support, that you would support their endeavors. Now, this is not an exact plan, but I did receive this today. This is a concept that, that they've got, if they were to receive, um, um, the statue, that they would, that they would hope to maybe make some kind of a part. And that, that's really what this resolution is, is that, that you support their endeavor in to create tourism, and, and, you know, additional tax revenue from visitors coming here. So, um, like I said, I don't think this is a final plan, but this is a concept they're working on. So this is something that this foundation's given a lot of thought to. Um, but again, it's not, it's not requiring anything from board supervisors, it's simply asking for your support for them to undertake that project.
I'll make that motion, Steve.
Right, it's the, all right, any discussion?
Uh, yes, if I may. Um, I'm kind of, I'm on the fence on this, and, uh, so you have explained the part the county plays in this, which is nothing, no financials, nothing that we do for the county, no tax favoring, but supposedly, I know, I'm a troublemaker, I'm sorry. Supposedly, we have, um, disagreements over this, that the Sheriff's Office is gonna have to come out and see about. And I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I'm just asking these questions. And has, what kind of, what kind of, uh, response has the community given to this? Or is that community okay with this?
Um, I, I really can't answer those questions from a, from a legal standpoint, um, and, you know, I don't even wanna try, because that's not really my, my job. I don't wanna, I don't wanna overstep my bounds. Um, but, you know, that's, I mean, obviously, I mean, you know, you all are speaking for the community, and, um, I don't know if anybody is, is raising any of those issues with you. I know, you know, this, again, this is not land that you're gonna be, you know, required to take care of, this is private land, but they will, they will ensure, you know, deal with any issues that may arise, it's just whether this board supervisors is in support of, of this project. I mean, so, I mean, it's, it's really, it's just a resolution of support, so, but I, I can't answer about.
So maybe I need to direct my question to the county administrator. So will the planning commission be involved in this? And will this nonprofit, or this organization, will they see that everything is kinda done, and maybe, will they have a public comment period or anything?
No.
I, I don't know. We just think, I just think this is weak, so I just did, no. I, I mean, I wanna make sure that we're all good with this.
I have a question with you too. I mean, this is a private foundation, going to private land. I mean, do we really even need to do anything, or is it okay that they just go on, they just go on and do, they don't need us to do that?
I don't think they would.
I don't know.
I don't think they would require this, this specific board to approve, now, whatever they're going to create, that may involve the planning commission. I don't, I don't know what the exact plan to be, I don't think that it's required, but, uh, I will, I think a lot of it is, 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 you know, relocation, these statues are gonna be very expensive, and if the, if the locality is not in support of the big there, then they may choose a different locality, because I think there's a substantial amount of money involved in that. But I mean, I don't think that they require it, because it's private land, it's just something that they, you know, I, I think it's more something that they want to make sure that they're willing before they do that.
I think there's, there's history there with the Ellenbrook, Ellenbrook. But that is, sometimes, um, J. S. R. And, you know, they're just, they're trying to make something right. They're required every year to do something of this nature, use some of the money, the foundation's money, to do something for the tree or something like that. And, uh, I think this, is this that area across where the old Mill Pond is? Is that where?
No, it's, it's right up, right below El Garden Methodist Church.
The Mill Pond is on down next to the Governor's House.
That's, that's where it is? That's a picture of the Governor's House right there.
They're not, Ellenbrook is right below El Garden School.
It's all owned by the same.
Same foundation.
Yeah.
Then are they gonna sit it right there, old number four, the white one, or way on down next to the Governor's mansion?
Looks to me like it's sitting right there in front, I can see the Governor's mansion.
No, that's Ellenbrook.
That's Ellenbrook?
Yes. That's not the Governor's mansion.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Well, perhaps, you know, this, I mean, I think this is very interesting, I really would do. But perhaps, um, the foundation might need to kinda get, and give a presentation, sort of.
I did, I just want you to have all the facts, I don't, and again, I, I personally have not been keeping up with the decision-making going on, which, regarding the statutes, but I mean, I don't know how quickly that will be resolved, and so I guess that's a concern for, you know.
Because they're still in litigation on it, in Richmond, they're still.
That's why, I, I have not personally kept up with that, you know, I mean, I don't know what, you know, obviously litigation can go on for years, or can be settled just like that, I mean, it just depends, I mean, so I can't tell you a timeframe, and again, I'm not trying to hurry, but I just want you to be aware that, you know, if some of them were resolved, and there was no resolution, then maybe they'll, I don't know if they would look elsewhere, so I mean, I don't know if that's a concern for this board, I mean.
I know Smith County's approaching, about doing it there, they got, and.
Hazel County.
Hazel County is also, also.
And this is not a guarantee, this is not a definite place, this is just a con, this is, again, a concept that they've come up with, I guess, if they were to relocate here. So I mean, to say that it's definitely, if, if they come here, and that it's gonna go out there, I can't say for sure, it's just an, it's an idea that they come, so.
So, so the Ratcliffe is good, right, the resolution, the Ratcliffe Foundation?
That's what I'm saying, I did, I did not draft it.
No. All right, any further discussion? All right, there's a call for both, there's a motion on the floor, on the floor. David, next, Steve seconded. All those in favor of the, uh, resolution?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Anyone voting no? All right. Lady, you have a motion?
Um, the last thing, it's, at the last meeting, we approved the new personnel policy, and that, um, that required any changes to job, job descriptions of the manager class to be approved by this board. And I understand that, um, county administrator's, has worked and has, has crafted this, uh, job description for the emergency management coordinator, and I have reviewed it, and it's for the board to, to, um, accept tonight.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, it basically.
Nobody's made a motion yet.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna be, it's gonna be emotional, you just discuss, like, to alleviate overtime, that type of stuff, right?
It, it, it does reclassify, um, the coordinator of emergency management as exempt, uh, you know, pursuant to the FLSA, you know, that really all depends on the type of work being done, but as a general matter, this position would be an exempt position.
Did we have, did we have this set up packet already, or did we just get this today?
We received it today, because it's a personnel issue.
I haven't looked at the first page. I said you're not looking, so.
I'll tell.
I'm not, I'm not hearing enough of them to understand what they're explaining.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. Um, um, all I said was, we have, we, we passed, we passed the personnel, the new personnel policy at the last meeting.
Yeah, I'll do it again. But I didn't quite understand why we're doing another personnel policy.
Oh, no, we're not doing another personnel, we're just, we're approving the.
You were at the last meeting, changing from one that we dealt, and after changing to four. You know, we went away, and off, then, me and you, and Cassandra, Ricky, and then he was coming up with a note, and I, you know, and I voted, and did both for, but I didn't know if I would go through a change of, change of the personnel policy.
This is not a change of the personnel policy. I, we're applying the personnel policy because we're changing a, a job description in pursuit to the new personnel policy that was adopted, that any changes or new job classifications and descriptions of, of a manager employee, of a supervisor or manager employee, have to be approved by this board. Um, any, any, uh, any, lower, any other classifications of job descriptions would not have to be approved by the board, that would be approved by the county administrator, but the president of a manager class, then it's for the board to approve.
Do we have a motion to accept this as it is, or do we need to table it and read it? Or table it? All right, since we just got it, we can table this until our next meeting, so that everyone has a chance to read it.
Just need to make a motion to table it.
Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
That we table it to read until next meeting?
I'll second it.
And second today. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no or abstain? All right, we will take this until next meeting.
Chairman, uh, Peter, make a comment?
Chairman, uh, Peter, make a comment.
At the next meeting. All right, is that all from you, Katie, George? Now, the county administrator's reports and requests.
Thank you, ma'am, chair. This is the first one of the county administrator reports and requests of six chairs. Is the VRA energy conservation rate renewed bond, annual refund, this is $148,181.91. This is applicable to the energy performance contract. A few years ago, we upgraded all the schools' energy performance, as a reminder, and this is part of us upgrading their, their windows and natural gas and water and getting out all the energy performance back in. And this is part of the treasurer's guarantee for this project of $148,181.91. This is reported up, this is given updates to the board supervisors, this program is performing well and the energy savings are coming through just as planned, which is guaranteed by train, which was the contractor at the time for the performance energy contractor. The next on the county administrator reports is, this is Russell County's CARES Fund from March the 1st through to December 31st. These are reports in y'all's package of how we have appropriated out the CARES relief fund throughout the town. As everyone can see, we have given, we have given up to $839,204 to the towns alone, the county for the whole operations, all the way from March to now. And that includes part of the PP&amp;E, the sanitizer and security for workforce and disposal, house cleaning, total of 714,064. Modifications to public safety and facilities, we've had clean supplies and of course, we have got decontamination machine. The $95,000 that we've given right here actually went to fire and rescue squads and the courthouses and the government buildings and Kelly into the libraries. So we've given out those machines, so, and we've also give out, along with those machines, we give out the disinfection for decontamination. We give each one of the 12 squads, one of these machines to be able to decontaminate their, their equipment and their facilities. And actually, it's a backpack, so there's a 5 gallon truck goes with this, it has a great fill rate as far as the COVID. Of course, we'll be going into in a minute, the small ba, small business grant program, which you, you guys will approve here in a minute, which we gave $120,000 to, to support business and recovery. Next is the community assistance programs, which is, of course, $52,500 for those, those are the food pantries around the county. So we have reached out to all the nonprofit food pantries to be able to give to them. And next on the county, next one line up is to the fire and rescue squads. We've also given out, actually, this has went up since this is, I won't want to correct the number, but I'll show you in a later one, so we've actually almost give out $400,000 to the squads to be able to take care of the fire, fire rescues in the, the fire squads. We also upgraded our equipment to be able to have these meetings and telework and do what we needed to do. And then, again, we've extended hotspots in all the community centers and libraries and some of the fire halls, some of the churches. So right now, today, we have spent 2.2 million, 227,000, we have 2.4 million remaining. So, but you've got to remember that the biggest portion of those went through, of course, the towns first, to get their share because the population that's based off of the code of Virginia. So, again, we got 2.2 million, 411,770. Next on the county administrator's reports is our Southwest Virginia Regional Jail FY20 inmate population and our FY21 projected inmate population through the regional jail. Of course, due to the COVID issues and the closure of the courts, we, we came out really well on this. Our total for ending, our average for the year ending on, was 137.97. Getting down to that, that's how far they go. And of course, we, as you'll see later on, there'll be a return of expanded, a refund from the regional jail that we came out of. They have projected us at FY21 at 180 inmates, and we hope due to the community work program that we keep it under that, because what we have budgeted for and what we anticipate will come out to, again, again, with a surplus. Next on the county administrator reports is the, if no one has heard or seen the signs, this is the General Dollar Store construction project. This is a project that was under, that is a new General Dollar Store that's going in at the intersection of Route 71 and 58. If anyone knows where the, this is this way, our downtown site was, or disposal site, this is right across the road from it. Here is the proposed location and the county and VDOT has been working on this, the contracts have been awarded, they're proceeding with the engineering and they are also proceeding with site development, so. This will give, this is speaking with engineers, this is, General Dollar Store has conveyed to us that this is one of their, due to the traffic volume of 51, I mean, of 71 and 58, this is one of their flagships. So they'll be able to service the area within 58, 71, and they think it's going to be a great success, plus to that community in those districts and to Russell County employees. This is jobs. So, next is the county administrator request. Of course, like I had mentioned before, I need a motion on these. These are converting the Russell County IDA applications to grants. I have put in y'all's package what the town eleven has given, this is their, their grant fund money that they have given out to each one of their businesses through the town eleven, through the town home acre and the IDA. The motion tonight for the Russell County Board of Supervisors, we have currently screened and approved eligibility of 15 applications here, through here, for a total of $75,000. So, I, we need, I need a motion for approval of the Russell County Board of Supervisors' CARE, CARES grant program funds, or $75,000 to these eligible.
What's the significance of the shaded ones?
Uh, the shaded ones are the ones that we're working with on the town home acre, where that's, that in the town home acre, they may be proving, picking those up. This is CARES fund, the CARES fund, we're making sure nobody is, we have to make sure that both funds is eligible. If, since the county is the conduit for the funding, when we give it to the town home acre, when we give it to the town eleven, we can't give it to the same person in both places. So we're, we're checking out the boxes and making sure if the town home acre picks these up, then we'll be great, that's under theirs, that we talked to them this afternoon, if they don't, then they'll come under the county. Either way, the business is, we taking care of them.
I'll make a motion with approval.
Thank you, sir.
I'll say it.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
On, on IDA grants, or did that need to say application of CARE, the CARES grant?
The IDA applications, they, they first began when the, back in April and May and June, doing loans. These, this is, that's the next motion.
I want to.
Because I've got to do, one has got to be converted and one is, is loan. I just want to take care of the Russell County loan, our grant through the Russell County Board of Supervisors first, and the second one is convert the Russell County IDA from loans to CARES grants. So, I can go ahead and answer that one right now. These, these were loans and now they want to convert them to grants, that they are eligible. They have since, when they first put in the applications, they put in the paperwork as a loan through VCSIDA to, through the IDA. Now they want the eligibility to turn these loans, which they can do under the CARES Act, to turn the loans to grants. So they're asking for approval on the next one, that'll be the next motion for $50,000.
Next question, who made the decision to, to check on this, to make sure that this CARES money would allow this? So has this been checked on?
Yes, ma'am.
Because these grants loans was before.
That's correct.
CARES was even for that, correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. But we have approval to turn this around and turn this into a grant?
Yes, ma'am.
You have listed those loans?
I'm sorry.
You have listed those loans?
Yes.
Right here.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You're right here, you're right here is the, that will be the next motion, the first one.
I just want it put up on screen.
It is.
It is.
An IDA.
This is IDA, this is what the ID wants converted to loan to grants.
Can you scroll down a little bit? There you go.
Now, these are, this is the town eleven, this is the town home acre. Motion that's currently before the board is the Russell County Board of Supervisors for these 15 applications, that the board supervisors is only awarding as grants. These are the board supervisors.
That's all I want you to do, just scroll down.
This is what we gave to the responses for sponsors.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
And I have to pass the criteria before it can be changed from a loan to a grant?
What the process is and the auditors have looked to review, based off the applications that were given to the IDA at the time for a business grant through VCSIDA, they, they had certain applications and certain documentations they had give, and what the IDA had to do was to resubmit with the paperwork for grants to make it same eligible. They, they had to meet the criteria and eligibility for a grant. They had to be in business in March the 1st. They had to meet every eligibility requirement for the conversion from loan to grant. That's applicable under the program.
Okay, so the IDA sent these out and made the decision on who would get this? I didn't even know this was going on until I got word in my package that this, that the IDA had to make this decision. So that's just the reason I'm questioning.
And, and that's a fair question, because at the time, the board supervisors, that was, that's something, a program that the IDA had taken on its own, it was not, it did not go through the board of supervisors at the time. It was when the, back in April and May, we didn't even get the CARES funding until June the 1st, which we had reported today, so I know the date very well. So, to the Department of Accounts, so June the 1st is the day that we received the electronic transfer of fund, of the first COVID funding. Now, under the program, under the CARES program, they, there is eligibility for business grants and conversion from loans to grants, it, it does both. So the IDA approached the board supervisors after the fact for conversion of IDA loans to grants to meet eligibility. Now, this is not, this was a much larger list, after eligibility requirements, and they had to make sure they were, they were a business since March the 1st, they had no outstanding taxation, no utilities, they had employment, they had their budget, they had their 1040s. The CARES grant is a more comprehensive program than the loan, because a loan is looked at as a gift, so they had to meet more eligibility requirements going in through than, than actually a loan. What is that?
It's a loan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, it's a granted, thank you.
And one that the IDA has previously given probably can file to the town home acre, well, two of them, because they are in the town home acre. They can, and we don't, that's, and we were double checking to make sure that IDAs are given and the town doesn't turn around and give to you.
Do we have callbacks on any of this when, when the grants are given? Do they have to be in business for X amount of time or pay it back or anything like that?
On the, on the guarantees, if you look at the application on the last page, they, they certify it to be, you know, valid and true. One of the things about it, it, these are valid businesses that's been screened and been here a while. So, we went through not one, two, or three times, but that's about how many times we've, we've re-screened and re-screened these, these programs and these businesses. So, these, these are fat, these are traditionally, Russell County businesses, been in business for a while in Russell County, some of them a long time, they're well-known, so they do meet eligibility. The IDA currently has 10 applications, it was actually 15, five of them did not make it. We, we got down to ones that were eligible for loan to grant conversion, based off the resubmission of all the financial documentation, and now you have 10 that are eligible. And based off of all the applications that went through the board supervisors, the 15 applications at 5,000 each, these are the ones that made eligibility. But in the meantime, we had to work with the town home acre, which we visited, the town eleven, and it met with our councils to make sure that we were trying to, the towns were taking care of as many town businesses they could do, the town home acre was taking care of as many businesses they could do, and the board supervisors is taking care of as many county, including the town, businesses that we could do.
Is this a continuation of, of grants?
This, per the application and the wording that we've got, it is based off, one is funding, it will continue till either September the 30th, which is the period, or, or the funding is the lead.
Thank you. I want you to say that publicly, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So the IDA is 10 grants at 5,000 each?
Yes, ma'am.
Because there's some that need to, that could actually be moved to something else or classification before it can be converted.
Yes, ma'am.
So instead of seeing 60,000, that's going to be 50,000?
That is correct, that is, that's what we have, is 50,000, yes.
So now we can all put on our Facebook pages and everything else one more time, to our local businesses, to please apply for the CARES money, thank you.
Yes, we have it on our website and have the applications on the county website.
And that's why you've gotten the names of the places, please look at these. You all will probably know folks that we might not know.
Yes.
That you can reach out to, because we want to take care of our people here.
Yes, the, we've got it on the webpage, we've put it on all of our media sites, Facebook, Twitter, to make sure everybody is eligible, you know, and knows of it and is aware of it. We've got many phone calls, plus we're working with all the towns, so working with the towns and working with us. And the IDA is back out there, they're trying to get some more businesses, they're in, and also some of them, you know, they're trying to work in each area, they're coming in out of Castlewood, they're coming in out of Dayton, they're coming in now, at, you know, in various parts that are not located in the town. So we're all working together, trying to make sure we're not missing anybody. And, and of course, anybody out there listening, please, you know, if you're a viable business, this grant is eligible. Please take a review of the application. But the first motion will be, because it's a two-part, the board supervisors has 15 applications for $75,000, that is solely grant. It never went through a loan to grant process, it is a grant. So I need an approval for 15 applications for $75,000.
I've been made the.
He's already made them.
I'm not sick. Okay, I'm sorry.
Until your grant is.
Okay.
Sick.
Sorry.
Yeah.
We went to the IDA and it got, and that's another motion.
Sorry about that.
We didn't read through the book access.
Yeah, they're ready, they're ready to IDA.
Okay, next motion.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 10, I'm sorry, don't get me straight. We'll confer above on the board of supervisors, 15 grants. So all votes in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstained? All right, now, IDA. All right, now, IDA, there's 10 grants here, we need a motion to change their loans to grants, and there's only 10 that's eligible.
Yes, ma'am.
But we're working with the others to get them changed shape, so.
Now.
Steve, make that motion to the second.
Say it.
David, all right? Any further conversation on the IDAs?
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the IDA's 10 grants?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right, town eleven?
Now.
You're opposed.
Now, the town eleven, they approved theirs. So again, the IDA, these 10 of conversion from loan to grants, just to sum it up, from loans to grants, this will complete the amount. The other five are not eligible for grants at all. So this 10 will be the only one that you will see conversions of. The rest will be grants under the program, under the board of supervisors, not the IDA. Of course, I put this in the packet for everyone to see, the town eleven, how they chose theirs so far, and the town of home acre, how they've chosen theirs so far, and of course, the board of supervisors that you just approved, and the updated numbers for the first responders. On the rescue, we have given out 175,000 of the CARES funding to the rescue squads and 210,000 out to all the fire departments, which is basically, we've given 35,000 to each one of the rescue squads and 30,000 to each one of the fire departments. And these are the food ministries and the food pantries that we have given to Roger E. Jesse, the Word of Victory, the Al Garden, Star Ministry, and Splash Ministry. So each one of those are in each one of the areas that we're in great need. And that sums up the summary for the Russell County CARES business grants and financials. Next, of course, is another approval for the Virginia Supreme Court Drug Treatment Grant Program. Again, this is part of Mrs. Carter's, this is Community Work Program. This is for the Russell County Adult Drug Treatment Court for $90,000. I need approval for appropriation allocation for fiscal year '21 for the Virginia Supreme Court Drug Treatment Grant.
So move.
David, do we have a second? All those in favor?
Next, on the county administrator reports, is the Russell County School Board FY21 Reversion Fund allocation. This is a request by the Russell County Treasurer. This is to move 535,143.68 from the school reversion funds back to the Russell County General Fund. I need a motion to approve 535,143.68.
So move.
Say it.
Any discussion? Are all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining?
Next, on the county administrator request is, this is, as mentioned before, the regional jail, our inmate population. This is the FY20 reconciliation of local contributions debt in short term. This is our refund due to, again, our Community Work Program and due to the reduction of the COVID cases. It is a refund of 527,967.18 for appropriation back to the Russell County General Fund.
So move.
Tim, do we have a second?
Say it.
For discussion, you.
Okay.
That money that comes back, do you allocate that back into a line for the regional jail or does it go back to the general fund?
It goes back to the general fund.
Okay.
It's available to stay with the regional jail in their treasury, along those.
We won't allow that. No. No, if it stays there, as you're talking about, as a credit, based off of that, the Code of Virginia doesn't allow it. At the end of the fund, it's like the school reversion funds, it by law, June 30th, it has to revert back to the lookout.
If they didn't.
If they did not, yes, yes. We did, we'd be charged on many of them. Leah?
All right, we have a motion by Tim, a second by Carl. Discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed or abstaining?
Again, this is another good one. The Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, this is a grant that just came down through to, for the Sheriff's Department for co-bid for 48,075.54. This is for them to be able to utilize their funds to support their offices and staff during this time. I need approval for 48,075.54 to the Russell County General Fund.
So move now, Chair. Move.
Say it.
David, discussion, all right? All those in favor? Hope that wasn't made. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Yes. Abstaining? All right?
Oh, my. Everybody wait?
Yep.
Now, now that we've brought all this money back, now they've got to spend some. Next on the county administrator request is, of course, a Russell County disposal truck purchase. This is for 56,326. I need approval for it. But also, in the second part of the motion will be to sell the other truck that we do as normally as part of our program, our replacement program, which has worked very well over the years. We usually end up utilizing these trucks. We buy them on state contract, which we get them at a cheap price, and then we sell them at market. And usually, Brian, correct me here if I'm wrong, we, our cost, our depreciation cost between what we buy for, and sometimes we have sold them and made more than we paid, and sometimes it's very less and it's nominal amount. So sometimes we have utilized up to maybe eight, $10,000 a year of cost for one truck. I mean, it's unheard of. So this program is part of the continuation of the program to purchase the 56,000, it's up for rotation, and to sell the other one in the open market. So it's a two-part motion.
Two-part motion.
I'll make that motion. I also want to commend Brian. If anybody wants to go buy a vehicle, I take time with it. I'm telling you, I've never heard of how you did that. It's remarkable how you've done that and saved that kind of money for the taxpayers of Russell County. But I just want to commend you, but I'll make that motion. I think it's a great concept. However you figure that out, it's, it's good.
So you're making a motion to purchase the new truck?
Yes.
And Carl, you're going to second that? All right, any more discussion on that, search for purchase of the new truck?
I agree with that.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, the second part of this motion is to allow Brian to take their old truck and to sell it.
I'll make that motion.
David, thank you. Second?
Say it.
Carl? All right, the second part of this motion is we will take the old truck and trade it in and sell it and hopefully get a lot of extra money. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining?
It's my understanding, you already have a price with the guy in Alabama or wherever to sell this thing?
He gets his minimum warranty of what he's going to bring. So we're guaranteed a certain amount. No matter what it brings, it brings 10,000, 5,000, we're guaranteed 110,000. And that's what I was basing on. I don't base it on what it is. I was basing on what we're getting. And every truck that we've sold in the past has brought more, 20,000 or more than the price guaranteed.
Yes.
So you're telling me that you could go down there, know when you're going to get 110, but you could very well come back with 100?
And to give you an idea of how it's working and we're saving, if we sold this truck, we kept it five years, our payments per month cost would be 2,500. By doing this rotation, we're costing us 500 a month is what it costs. Plus the trucks are working. If a motor goes down, Mack's responsible, any major down, we've got it fixed. We don't have to pay out costs.
While the other car is not.
It'll spend a tremendous part of the truck.
It runs two trucks. Brian, there was a person proposing on the back of that, 40,000.
That's for the roll-off fee. There's two components, you got the truck, which is a Mack truck, and then the roll-off that's put on six. But yeah, but it comes with a pack, which when they deliver it, we get it as well.
But when, now, the reason again, we buy these on state contract. So we use the power of purchasing, the power of the government. When it goes back to sale, it goes to the open market, which, you know, it's got very low, it's got miles on it, but it's still in good shape. Brian maintains these vehicles very well. Always, he puts down the estimate of what we currently, we've got gap insurance on what it is. He's guaranteed 110,000. Now, when I estimate out, I'm a little optimistic because I'm going off the future. Brian's been really well at this, and I'm saying 140 is what I'm selling for, so Brian, no estimate. But they, if the program does work, it works really, really well. I mean, and even some of the private companies have heard of this and they say, how do y'all do this? And some of them are trying to start to do it. But it works well. We got the truck, we get it in, we get it on itself. And matter of fact, they can close the county administrator reports in advance.
And next, our final thing, do we have any matters that want to be discussed presented by the board? Oris, do you have anything you need to discuss with us tonight?
I've done.
David?
Yes, ma'am, I just got a couple of things. The first one is, I got a call today from Aaron Ball, who lives at Maloo, and he has obtained a petition to try to get water service up in that area.
Tried it and tried it and tried it. They tell me it's too far, there's not enough mileage.
Well, he says that their springs are drying up and are contaminated, and I.
And they're too far from the fire hall. It's their extra insurance.
And I told him I'd bring it up tonight and see if there's something that we could do to, and I know there's other areas in all of our districts that need it, but since Aaron called, he said one of the, two of the commercial accounts that he had was Sterling and Cattle, and also Wailing Hard and them once up water. So he said he had two commercial accounts, not counting all the residents. So I just wanted to make the board's aware of that. Second, I'm a little frustrated right now because I don't know who, who in all had this information about this project, Dr. Brown's. But apparently, he's communicated with somebody or other people, but I didn't know anything about it or nothing was ever related to me or communicated with me at all. And I don't like this spur of the moment stuff. I'd like to be kind of informed and communicated with if anybody has any information like this that they could provide so we could study it and think it out and maybe ask them questions and stuff before we have to actually take a, take any measures. I would be really grateful and with Oris for that because I just don't like being, some of this stuff here being sprung up and us taking action when I would like to be able to digest it a little bit more, but that's basically all I've got.
Dave?
I'll just tell you what, Katie, I'd asked about the business license. I'll tell you what Katie told me, and she had asked me about it, she'd called me, asked me about it, and I said, it's not about trying to generate revenue, all we were talking about, and maybe it's just a registration issue. But I just think we need to know who's out there, where they're at, what they're selling, because, or what service they provide. Because, you know, when you get, when you get companies coming in to look at the area, they may walk in and say, well, I need somebody that can do this, this, and this, and you can point them right to the right people. And it would've been real helpful to have a list of those people, you know, to send out, you know, send out information about this company. So I think we need to do something like that. If it's, if we don't charge any fee at all, I don't, here, I just want a list, I'd like to have a list of them. And I don't know how, and make it a requirement of some sort, put some token thing on it that, you know, when you're doing business, you need to come in and register, just register your location and what you're doing. Other than that, I really don't. I kind of agree with David. I had a lot of people calling me asking if I'd heard about the daycare, but still, still doing the daycare. Not to my knowledge, I hadn't heard a first word about it until I opened up the packet board back and saw that. Oh, yeah, and we've been asked to look at possibilities of extending, doing a resolution to extend the second amendment, and I think probably, probably just need to bring it back to the next board and get a copy of the resolution. Other than that, I.
Luke?
Yes, I have something that I want to discuss. Our tonnage report, now this is back to the, we're all in trash again. And I've been watching the tonnage reports for my district. And the little Hamlin site is on overflow here. We're pushing a lot of garbage out of the Hamlin site, so.
That's what we're having on the truck.
So I want the savings off of his truck to help me reuse a site for that little corner of the world down there. I think it's phenomenal, if you look at this, we're like Lebanon, of course, we know, is going to take the cake and they're going to be number one all the time. That's understandable. But then you get down here to Little Hamlin, and there's only one Flat Rock. Who's not Flat Rock, by the way?
I do.
But you've got Flat Rock. You're beating Hamlin on the tonnage, but I'm next. So I really need to have some updates and upgrades. So I'm throwing that out here now to this board and to the public there. I'm working on some upgrades and updates to the Hamlin Trash Transfer Convenience Center site because it's certainly not, I think it right now is on overflow. And I went the other day and the trash was all over the road. I mean, it was past the top of the over top and it was spilling out over into the road. So it is, it's just too small. So thank you for listening.
Carl?
No, I haven't here.
Tim?
This is, I guess, a minor thing, but I'd just like to ask the board if they would consider going back like we did a couple of years ago and doing a discretionary thing. In light of the monies that we got back from the regional jail, reversionary monies from the school, and the COVID money that's taken care of a lot of these expenses that we, I bet we were going to have to. You know, that kind of lets us each do a little thing here and there in our district that, you know, to make something in my district that I could do that you all don't even have in there, and vice versa, and that way that keeps us out of the, but if we do for one, we got to do for all, you know. Like I said, maybe there's something I can do for my district that you all would be interested in doing. You may have something totally different that I would have on this board. Just gives us a little flexibility, and I think last time we did 5,000 each, so we'll be looking at 5,000. But this is something I think we should consider.
So you can look into that and let us know that our next meeting. Okay. All right, anything else? All right, at this time, we will set our meeting for October the 5th at 6:00. Here, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make it with it.
Carl, do we have a second?
Say it.
Tim, all those in favor?
Aye.